Did you need to print out some of the stuff she sent?
Sure, I'll take it. Yeah, thank you. I got it in the email.
I think I printed it out, yeah.
That'd be great, thank you.
One minute? You ready, Andrew? Alright.
Let's see, get five minutes.
Welcome to the January 10th City of Oldsmar Work Session on the Downtown Development Request for Proposal Specifics. It is 2:00 PM and I am calling this meeting to order. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us. We're gonna start out today with our invocation and our pledge allegiance to the flag by our city attorney, Tom Trass. Please rise.
Heavenly Father, we pray that you guide us as always. Satisfy the needs that need to be met during this meeting. Strengthen the council as they make tough decisions. Guide them to be effective and decisive so that this meeting will be productive. In this, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tom. Our next item on the agenda is the Oldsmar Public Open Forum. Each speaker will be recognized once and will be limited to a five-minute presentation on any subject. Please state your name and address for the record. Is there anybody on this side of the room would like to speak to the council? Okay, how about this side of the room? Oh, you want, come on up. Yes, come on up.
My name is David Llewellyn. I live at 212 Bengal Circle. I've lived here since 2010 when we built our house. And many people ask, why did we build our house when 450 houses in Oldsmar were for sale? We had a new house, new roof, waterproofing facade, windows, and everything else. Mechanical equipment. As I review the elements of the RFP, call for the complete site to be redeveloped, including City Hall. Leaving the 100 building would be, it would diminish the project as I, from what I view, and the building, the 100 building, as I understand, needs significant improvement work. If the city moves out of that building, they could move into new, efficient, environmentally friendly office space. And their move might also entice other entities to move into the area. The priority of the City Hall inclusive project, scope versus price, which is on the agenda, would be presented by GAI based on their evaluation. The concept that the developer is giving the city back the 100 building, significant taxpayer money to restore the building after a use for it is found. Please return this building to the tax rolls. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Dave. Yes, come on up, sir. Thank you. Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is TJ Murphy. I live at 301 Fairfield Street. Been living here since 1980. Just three quick points I wanna point out real quick is, I teach my grandson how to ride a bike. It's very difficult in this city now because people's cars block the sidewalks and it forces me to go out in the street. About five years ago, I actually had a police officer stop by my house because I was doing that too because some people, handicapped people couldn't get through. And they asked me, you know, so I'm gonna have to cite you if you don't. So there must be a rule against doing that. So if the police could, like, I don't cite everybody, but give them all a warning. Say, you cannot block their sidewalks, okay? I mean, it's getting to be crazy. Okay, point number two is, again, with the little guy going all over the city and I'm a runner around all the city. I moved to Oldsmar because I don't like a lot of restrictions. I don't like a lot of rules. That's why I don't live in Eastlake and things like that. But some of the rules, we gotta, we gotta kind of rein some of it in a little bit. What's going on with all the trailers in everybody's yard and RV vehicles? I mean, have you ever really looked, drove around? Do it one day. It's astronomical how many huge, huge Winnebago's. If you can afford a Winnebago that costs $150,000, you can store it for 30 bucks a month, you know, in three places right up the block. It's an eyesore. It's an eyesore and it looks like crap. And a lot of people are living in them, okay? And the same with the work vehicles. Again, I like Oldsmar because it's got no restrictions and so, you know, little businesses, that's great. There are little trucks out front, but now people are putting like four-wheel, no, putting huge dump trucks in their front yard, especially in the hidden areas if you go back out toward Mobley Bay and stuff like that. I mean, I mean, there's tractors, there are, you know, dump trucks sitting in their front yard. You know, again, I like not a lot of restrictions, but that's just not, that's not good. It's not a good look. Two more quick points is the trees. I'm a big tree nut. Well, I've planted probably 100,000 trees, but not in this country. I've planted them all over the world. We have tree ordinances and we have, isn't that one of our mottos? You know, Oldsmar is the trees. You guys give out, you know, to cut down trees like at a whim. You know, I don't like leaves in my yard. Cut down a 100-year-old oak tree. Oh, it's looking, you know, that's ridiculous. If it's endangering your house, yes, okay? If it's blocking something, yes. But you can't just cut down a 100-year-old tree. It's not yours. I don't care if it's on your property. It belongs to my child and your children are our grandchildren, okay? Go up and visit the Panhandle where Michael hit. I have property in Jackson County, Florida. They lost 80% of their trees when Michael hit. 80% changed the entire city. It looks like nothing. It's unbelievable. It's because the trees weren't taken care of, and that's another point. We have an arborist, right?
Yes.
Okay, so when these guys come to cut for the wires, don't just hack so the wires are there. An arborist can pick and choose which limbs and how they're gonna grow and how they're gonna form when they're cut. So they, before these guys start to cut, just walk, take that limb, that limb, that limb, that limb, leave this one, leave that one, okay? And maybe it's worth spending $100,000, okay, to clean up our old trees so that when we get a hurricane, they survive it, okay? The trees will survive if you thin them out a little bit. They can survive category one and two hits, but if they're thick and old like they are now, our trees are very, very old and we're gonna lose them all. And that's gonna be a sad day. And I'll be here to remind you that when we get hit with a category two and we lose every one of our trees and how it's gonna change the whole outlook. So now we're getting ready to build our new downtown and the corridor, all they talked about is shade and getting trees and how do we shade the way? We got the trees! So let's protect them! Let's protect them! So spend the money now versus the hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in cleanup that's gonna cost the city when the category two comes through. Because it's coming, guys. It's coming. And the last thing I wanna say is the new downtown, I love it, we're thinking about it again. I just got back from a two-week travel all through the Northeast and Tennessee and up into, up into New England, okay? I went to their downtowns, you know why? It's because they were eclectic. They were different. They weren't just condos, condos, condos in the same old stores. They had weird little stores that I wanted to see and weird little shops and they had a little museum, a children's museum in Know-Nothing Town, North Carolina, that we went out of our way and spent the entire day there and ate two meals in that town because they had a cool little children, a children's museum in Know-Nothing Town, okay? We have one, obviously, in town, in St. Pete and Tampa. But look for eclectic, guys. Don't sell out. We have space. Nobody else in Pinellas County has space. Utilize that properly. Be smart. Don't sell out for the quick buck, okay? Sell out for the future of my grandchildren and your grandchildren, okay? And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else would like to speak to the council? Yes, come on up, please.
My name's Grace Baboukas. I live at 302 Park Boulevard. I wanna support a couple of things that this gentleman just talked about. There's a construction project on Park and Buckingham. They knocked down so many trees, my heart was breaking every time I saw a tree go down. I don't know how many trees they took down. So I support that very much. I also agree with little towns like Deland, Mount Dora. Spend a weekend at those towns because they have the most eclectic, cute, adorable, well-attended downtowns. I do, however, also wanna comment on the RV, okay? One of the reasons I came to Oldsmar is because I like less regulation. I have an RV. I think that there's a compromise where you can put your RV behind a gate in your backyard. That's where mine is. Storage is approximately $15 a month per linear foot of RV. It's not $30 a month. So I think that we could come up with regulations. I mean, mine is camouflage, so it's not really obvious from the road, but I think that there could be a meeting point on that, okay?
Thank you for coming up.
Thanks, Grace.
Yes, Jerry. Yes, Mayor.
Jerry Beveland, 512 Pine Avenue South. She can park her RV inside of her house. I think that's in our code. Let me check that out. But the guy's right. You have left, not you, I don't know what our code enforcement guy does, but it would be nice if he'd walk, drive down the streets once a year at least. I know where there's a truck, a boom truck, that's sitting in the yard for four years. I had to come and talk to a couple of, it's still there. I think maybe they finally got through to him, I think, this week. Why, there's a house across the street. I don't know why you'd buy that house across the street when you got something done on this side of the street that looks like crap. And it's crap. So I would advise you, Mayor and council people, to go up and down the streets and see how many illegal trucks there are in front of people's property. And that's fine if you don't live across the street from it. Now, what you're about to do over here, I think I told my friend, another mayor, that when he was elected, after he was not elected, or after he left the city, and you did a good job as mayor, by the way. It's still empty. Isn't it, Mayor? It's still empty. And it's gonna be empty for quite a while with y'all set up there. It's still gonna be empty. So when you, whatever you do this time, and I have to admit, when I was mayor, we went through it three times. And I finally said, make it into a park, which doesn't make any sense because it doesn't bring any money, but that's how disgusted I got with it. Just make it a park out of it. And as far as this building, it doesn't matter whether it fits in with other buildings in the city. It's still the mayor. I remember we was gonna build the City Hall across the street in your neighborhood. Not in your neighborhood.
No.
And we, and Mayor Penn had decided he wanted it here, which I agreed with him. So whatever you do with it, this, this building is a historical building and it stays here or some of us will bring the whole town around somebody. Now, that building over there, I don't care what you do with it. You can tear it, you can tear it down.
Noted.
Writing that down.
I was on council when we built it. And I will tell you this story, that it, the budget was 1.8 billion. And when I got on council, I said, of course, I was only a council person at that time, if you build it for 1.8 million, we'll bring the whole town around you all head. 1.4. Don't go up, well, the doors were like $1,000 each. I said, go down to Walmart. Walmart. Walmart doesn't sell chores. Go down here and buy a $100 door. And the guy said, well, we won't have a beautiful, yeah, you will. Nobody cares what you do down here when you open the door. Don't build the roof you're gonna build it. And I said, I'll tell you what, I'll scream until it's down 1.6 million, 1.4 million. Guess what we paid for it? 1.4 million. So whatever you do, reason it out. I wouldn't give it to anybody else so they can build something there. I don't want, I don't think you should build condominiums there or townhouses there, but this building, you leave alone.
We are.
Thank you. Your life is saved.
We're not touching it.
Over there. I hope you all settled for something. But remember, I think I told you one time, when I was on council, I was mayor, if I made a decision, in any place in this town, before I made a decision on something big, I considered the people that lived around what was gonna be built. On the corner of Pine Avenue and Forest Lakes Boulevard, it was gonna be, this is when I was mayor, they was gonna build a 7-Eleven there. And I said, no, you're not. So I went to the guy that owned it, and he owned a lot of land over here. By the way, that's how we got the lake. When you drive out, you have a beautiful lake. That's how we got the lake. Because I told him at the time, you're not building a hotel there. And so we made a deal with the man. We gave him some zoning that I didn't care about on Pine Avenue. He built all those doctor's offices. I said, you give us that corner, Pine Avenue and Forest Lakes Boulevard, and you give us a lake over here, we'll give you the zoning on. And I come back to the city manager and I say, here's what I talked to him about. And we bought it at council. Now, now there's a beautiful complex there. But I said, as long as I'm alive, there will never be a 7-Eleven set on that corner. I kept my word. Now, taking, taking consideration who the people that surround what you're gonna do over here, that's just as important as what you're gonna build, in my opinion. Take the people that live around it in consideration. They're gonna have to give up something. We all do. We can't make it a park. They're gonna have to give up something. But don't give them a monstrosity.
Thank you, Jerry.
And there's a lot of, and there's a lot of intelligence up here.
Jerry, you're always welcome here. You know that.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you very much.
I'll see you at that next council meeting.
You're always welcome here. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, come on up, Mayor.
Eric Sedell, 114 Shore Drive Place, beautiful Oldsmar. Haven't been to a meeting in a while. I walk in, I see Jerry. What's the first thing he says? Man, you've got fat. Like, well, I don't worry about stuff anymore. Hey, I only have a few things that I wanna add. Of course, I agree with Jerry about this building, and I know that's not on the docket to consider, so, but it's a good point to let our citizens know. I just wanted to share just a couple thoughts with y'all. Number one, I think it's smart to entertain, including that building, the City Hall. It's gonna require a lot of investment. It's one of the things that in years past, we would look at and be concerned about as to longevity of it. It's like 35 years old now. By the time you get done, assuming you're able to move forward and get some stuff done, it's gonna be like 40 years old. And at that point, us as taxpayers are gonna have a lot of investment to do and it becomes a lot less practical. I know it's been a building that was built with a lot of passion. A lot has changed. 35 years ago, Tampa Road wasn't the hotspot that it is today. And so, does City Hall need to be right there? Probably not. It's a good thing to consider. I'm glad to hear you're thinking about it. The other point that I just wanted to make to y'all, because I recognize that when you start talking about different elements that you want to see in this downtown, it can be easy to forget one fundamental, and that is the economics of it. And when I say the economics of it, I don't mean the impact to the area. I mean the impact to the taxpayers to pay for what we want. And so, I'd ask that you really keep that in mind. We're a city with a, what, $36 million budget? I know the infrastructure over there is probably matches that. And that's when it becomes important to have more land to use as leverage with the developer to get them to pay for as much as possible. And, because there's only three ways to pay for it. Either you raise our taxes, you take on long-term debt, or you can leverage the developer to pay for it. So I just encourage you to really keep that in mind. You know, it's fun to go, we want this, 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 and this, but the reality of it is you guys gotta figure out how to, how to get it paid for. And the last thing I have that's really important, I just wanna say thank you to y'all for your service, taking on this task. It's a tough one and it's exciting for me to see you guys stick with it, opened up the process, that's great. But at the end of the day, we've elected all of you to actually give your opinion and decide. And I know it's not an easy task, so I wanted to make a point of coming out here today just to say thank you for taking that on. All right? God bless y'all. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you for coming today and joining us for this work session. It means a lot to us. Thank you so much for coming. Anyone else would like to speak to the council? With that, I'm gonna close the public open forum. The next item on the agenda is request for proposal process and format, and I'm gonna turn it over to our city manager, Felicia Donnelly. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. The purpose of today's meeting is to refine the city council's intent for the RFP document. And this agenda includes very important conversations that relate to the proposal process, the proposal elements, and then how you're going to evaluation, how you're going to evaluate the submissions. Having said that, you all have authorized a work order, and I would like to introduce Laura Smith and Owen Betch from GAI Community Solutions Group, and they will facilitate the remaining part of this meeting. So thank you.
Thank you.
Laura.
Welcome, guys. Come on up. We're ready to get started.
Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Dr. Owen Betch. I'm with Laura Smith. We're both from GAI Consultants in Orlando, 618 East South Street, Orlando. I can tell you from the beginning that the two of us, having been involved in many similar efforts, have not actually met with a commission or a council to discuss the requirements of their specific request for proposal. So, let's start by acknowledging the official commitment to the process involving each of yourselves as elected leaders and the willingness to have a public work session involving members of the community that might speak to specific things that they want to include or exclude. So thank you for that. I'm not quite sure how much time this afternoon's discussion will take. We've purposely attempted to parse it out into distinct topics in hopes of arriving at least at a direction. Direction is a purposely chosen word. That may not mean entirely consensus. Direction to be distinguished from absolute consensus. Over the next several weeks, approximately four to five weeks, we're gonna be drafting a request for proposal, in part reflecting your guidance that we hear today, reflecting our own experience and producing similar documents, bringing it to you hopefully as a polished draft, to get your acknowledgement and agreement to then distribute it to the responders that were selected through the letter of interest process. Then allowing them a certain amount of time, approximately four to five weeks, to respond with more detailed information. But in any case, let me try to give you an overview of the process so that we can focus what we believe is your time on probably what are the most distinctly important issues to address as part of the broader solicitation process. I want to introduce one caveat that I learned not, not too distantly ago to make before I embark on any presentation. By notion of the fact that this is a presentation, it is really a summary. A summary of a process that is about to unfold. It hasn't yet. By notion of it being a summary, there are clearly things that we may choose to revisit with you later for more detail or simply do not get addressed today. And the fact that they aren't specifically being addressed today doesn't mean we don't think they're important. It's the interest or the measure of a summary that perhaps some of these items are given less attention and we hope will be forgiven if we're overlooking a particular point that you think is important and we believe it's incumbent upon you to ask us about it, not simply suggest that we failed to address it. So I start with that. I mentioned the timeline. I think you're gonna find that by the time you have your next, your next formal meeting, our draft will be in a well-polished state, in part because we are having today's discussion and it will have been submitted to the city and the city staff for review and to get their additional comments. I don't think in many ways its content or its form will be much of a surprise. In effect, by distributing the letters of interest, you've already alerted the community generally to what the process requires of the respondents. I think it's wise to mention that we see the idea of having five respondents, all affirming very strong interest in this opportunity, is an extraordinary start. The reason you have shortened it down to five respondents was, A, in hopes that one of those five would be so outstanding and exceptional that perhaps you could have proceeded to further negotiations at that point. Instead of one that was clearly exceptional, you got five very good proposals in a preliminary state suggesting that each of them were more than adequately qualified to look into this opportunity in more detail. A common tie among all the submissions was the very strong interest. A common deficiency in each of the proposals is while they met all the requirements that we had articulated, all of them had a slightly different vision for how this might unfold. And the purpose then of the RFP is really to elaborate on the prior content, which is important, to distinguish now among the parties that are participating, a very certain understanding about how each firm, individual, or element of what they are about to submit to you in a second round of more formidable and formal submissions is clearly understood by you, staff that'll be reviewing them, and hopefully the community that will have an opportunity to see them and respond. So what we see in the delivery of the request for proposal simply is an expansion of a process that you already started. And again, to emphasize, I doubt that there will be remarkable surprises in terms of what's, what's offered up. If there is a surprise, I would say, it's that in some cases, we actually see substantially more detail and more information that enables us to pick and choose and then negotiate among the options that are on the table. Once the, the RFP itself is distributed, at the moment, we are contemplating in about a four or five week. I think our actual work order to you indicates a four-week turnaround. While we think that that is not at all an unreasonable turnaround, I will say without qualification, that the more time that we are prepared to provide to complete the submission process, the more substantively advanced and the better quality of the submissions, the less challenge and difficulty, perhaps less uncertainty you'll have in any subsequent negotiation process. In other words, this is one of those situations where the time and effort, excuse me, that you invest on the front assures a quicker resolution and an advancement and implementation of the actual development itself. of the actual development itself, which I think is really, at the end of the day, you want the commitment and the assurance of a start rather than just a continued prolonged negotiation process. We think we understand how to make that occur, and the content of our request for proposal is intended really to do that. So I think one of the things we're going to want to decide today, it isn't a pivotal decision, but I think one of the things we're going to decide today or would like to hear your feedback on, even if we don't make a formal decision, is how rigidly or strongly do you feel about a time of delivery or the proposal itself from the respondents? And I think what I'm saying is two things. More time is better. Four weeks is an absolute minimum. It can be accomplished in four weeks. I prefer a little more time, and we can discuss what the words "a little more time" means. Let's talk about what some of the common elements are going to be in this RFP that do broaden the information that was already articulated in the letter of interest. We're going to reaffirm what the history and objective is of this process. As part of the history and the objectives, we are going to be exploring the fact that we have this 30-year-old City Hall across the street. I guess it's across the street that way, and at least picking up on some of the conversation that we've already heard this afternoon. Some people acknowledge that it may require investment. Some people certainly acknowledge that it's a building who's had a useful life, and at least as part of this request for proposal process, we will need to decide affirmatively whether the building is or isn't involved in the process. And the reason we want to make that decision definitively and not leave it to a developer as an option is part of the RFP process is to remove issues that distract us from looking at all of the proposals in exactly the same set of filters. So the idea here is, is try to eliminate noise and static and have all our respondents, by answering a uniform set of questions and responding to a very specific and uniform set of criteria, including leaving City Hall in or excluding that parcel, there's no question we are comparing carrots to carrots and not carrots to sliced carrots or cooked carrots even. It is a uniform and consistent measure across different types of development approaches. The key then is resolving whether we have five acres, six acres, seven acres, whether we're prepared to abandon rights away, if rights away are involved or not. And I think all of you do know that the size of the parcel or parcels that can be activated in part depend on what the requirements of City Hall may really be. So one of the things that we know that the city is preparing for the moment that we will assist with, but we ourselves are not preparing, is a very, very complete due diligence package, which is a part of any standard real estate transaction. If you were to buy a house, and perhaps it's possible that some of you are involved in commercial real estate, I don't know your individual background, but if you were to buy a house, you would stipulate a closing day with the expectation you have a home inspector, maybe other professionals look at the property to decide if the physical condition of the asset was one that you wanted to ultimately pay for and then close. The intent in this due diligence package, if you were selling your home, would be to provide as much of that information to the prospective buyer as possible. To wit, you would have had your own home inspection by a third-party independent contractor. You would have all the home warranties and all the appliances. You would have a survey and perhaps a ready title so that this party could see the full extent of what in fact may be purchased. That's a little more trouble than most homeowners actually go to when they sell their home, but even that advances or potentially advances the closing process. Here, what we would do is we would be providing surveys, environmental studies, additional copies of whatever regulatory controls. Obviously, the minutes of these meetings where you're officially on the record as saying things are acceptable or not become a part of that due diligence process so that somewhere along the way, as the proposals are being prepared by the respondents, as much as we can plausibly anticipate is addressed in advance. We want to delay the need for any particular respondent to request subsequent information. Now, does that mean you should go through extra expense to prepare certain things? Some of them will be your obligations as sellers to provide regardless. Some of the things might be optional, you know, based on convention or the requirements of the marketplace. Bottom line is, we certainly expect you to meet what will be your legal requirements to close, and we expect you to provide all the typical things that would be in a typical due diligence package that are within your control to have those delivered with the request for proposal. And we've been working with your city manager to assure that. One of the reasons we're having this discussion today is, like City Hall, there are other things to consider here that stem from your earlier commitment to a vision of place. One of your earlier citizens talked about the need and the cost of upgrading the property and the need to make certain investments in the infrastructure. So among the things that'll be outlined in the request for proposal, which was just touched upon very nominally in the letter of interest, is some very explicit instruction about the consideration of City Hall, for example, being in or not being in the process, whether or not infrastructure itself is available, to the extent we deem the developer or the respondents that are acting on this request for proposal what will be their financial responsibilities as part of this effort and not the city. And I think our position at the moment, as we understand it, is fundamentally, other than the collection of the normally responsible data to pursue an ultimate closing of the property and the transaction, is we are expecting the developers to carry all the costs of acquisition and development. And it seems unlikely to us that there will be other unknown or unanticipated costs that we should experience. So that will be among the things that are clearly articulated in the request for proposal that I don't think had been absolutely identified in the LOI. The process that we anticipate, aside from the thematic collection of all this data, is the following. We will have a uniform set of criteria for evaluating each of the submissions. That's going to be a latter point I want to turn to in a few minutes because ultimately we have to have a rubric by which we choose a preferred developer and we make a decision about how we want to negotiate. We envision a process where the criteria come largely out of today's discussion, and the emphasis on that criteria and its weighting will have a lot to do with how proposals are evaluated. So you have substantive influence, maybe not on the proposals themselves, but on shaping the proposals and identifying the factors that you believe require perhaps disproportionate weighting in the actual selection and then negotiation process to refine. What we anticipate ultimately is that depending on how important the price is versus the actual content of the submission, that the price itself may be delivered in a separate sealed envelope if in fact the plan and the emphasis on the team is far more important than the price. There are reasons to do that. We'll explore those in a few minutes. Once we have chosen our selected respondent, typically, we would require them to bind the agreement with some amount of money. We would require that that amount of money actually be submitted with the proposal itself. We want to assure that those participating in this process understand that there is at least a minimal financial barrier that must be satisfied, and that you as a local community and a government are not prepared to expend additional time and effort without at least satisfying this nominal and minimal financial barrier. The exact amount of money will be a strategic issue to decide. I don't know that we will need to discuss that today, but I think we do need to agree that some form of financial consideration accompanying the proposal is probably important. One other reason, aside from demonstrating a true commitment to the process, is demonstrating a commitment to the timing of the process. Just as in your earnest money would be recouped or lost in a specific amount of time if you're buying a home, we anticipate putting a time stipulation on any money that's delivered with a proposal. Again, whether it's a nominal amount of money, I think is not the issue for today's discussion. It's just that we agree that there is an amount of money, and after a certain amount of time spent with the party that we believe is the party we want, if we can't come to an agreement, you know, we have to decide at that point what we're going to do with that money. What we're going to be doing once we receive the proposals is the following. It disappoints me to say this a little bit. Two of the most important parts of this process are not just the proposal. The proposal focuses on the plan and what you as the community want. The second aspect is substantively more complicated. That's actually reaching a closure and a final commitment, which will focus then on two documents. It'll focus on a typical form contract, which the city may have, and if not, I'm sure your attorney can draft for this purpose, for the sale agreement itself. Typically then, what would be attached to this form contract is a development agreement that articulates all the responsibilities of the party that is acquiring the property and an understanding that those covenants articulated in that development agreement are going to stay with that contract and that property at least until some type of formal development is implemented and reaches an operational state on the property. I assume that we will agree that we don't want to enter into any kind of commitment with a developer that doesn't require that initial developer to then deliver the product that is represented in the development. It's entirely possible to actually do that. I don't want to say we can't. I want to say we probably don't want to do that. But I think it's fair to say that once we are satisfied that we've reached an agreement with a specific party or group of individuals, that those will be the one fulfilling the commitments, at least initially, on the development agreement and the contract, and that will then run with the land regardless of what that initial party decides to do with the I think a point of policy that we would recommend, which was certainly not laid out in the letter of interest, could affect the timeframe, is that each party that puts a proposal together creates a specific legal entity, the nature of which we do not care, but that legal entity is going to be the representative agent or party for the submission or submissions that you will receive. And the reason we believe that that's important is because at the moment, as outlined in the LOIs, we just have a loose confederation or association, if you will, of developers, architects, maybe real estate brokers, maybe construction specialists. But this proposal will require a spokesperson signature that is able to bind and commit those parties as a legal entity. We're not entirely sure at the moment what length of time may be required to do that. If we stay at a four-week delivery date for the proposal, that potentially is a little tight. Is it necessary that we do that? No, it's not. We're saying it's a strategy and a process that we recommend rather than having to push off on and negotiate later. It's one of those small tidying up things we can do in advance. It does cost the potential respondent some amount of money, but it's not... Or shouldn't be. Let's put it this way. That shouldn't be a cost barrier that threatens any respondent. Since I am talking about cost, I do want to interject this. We believe that having been through this before, fundamentally, government procurements are not a friendly process. We believe that we are stewards of public resources and assets, which certainly we Sometimes we structure the way we acquire things in a form that's somewhat disproportionate to the level necessary at a distinct point in time. So what we've articulated in our process are what we think are reasonably and quickly attainable submission material. We believe that we'll articulate, when it comes to it, an amount of money that is probably appropriate as consideration to submit with the proposals, yet to be determined. But we want to keep the barrier high. We don't want to keep the barrier beyond that of Olympic jumper. We don't think that's necessary at that stage, and we hope that what we recommend in this process at least resonates with your level of stewardship and obligation as elected leaders. While the proposal or the request for proposal has been drafted or will be drafted, and while we're waiting for responses, we anticipate that there will be a question and answer period. We want this question and answer period to be available to all the participants. We want it to be as open as possible. And what we had anticipated is it would be fairly early in the process, and yet it doesn't necessarily close out later questions that may emerge as the developers actually organize their process. So there's an argument to be made in that timeline that even perhaps two question and answer sessions are appropriate. One, which provides the initial reaction to the actual RFP. Another that says we answer questions closer to the end of the submission date, when they've had a chance to really think through how we answered the questions initially with the assistance of you and staff, and how those answers then are starting to submit or starting to affect the process and the plans that they're putting together. and the plans that they're putting together. There will be a pre-bid conference, we're certain. I think introductory questions will be raised. I usually find that the pre-bid conferences are not as helpful as I'd like them to be. I think we have an obligation to provide them, certainly. It's possible, because we've already had and identified potential respondents, it is possible that could serve as the first question and answer period with the later session than the follow-up. We'll have to see how that works out. I think that brings us to a discussion. Hold that thought, if I may. I think it's rational to wonder how long the RFP is. A letter of interest, I think, probably consumed maybe three pages. I think this will be a good deal longer than that, but in my particular interest of assuring that we don't create barriers, we will hope to call anything but the most necessary legal requirements of your procurement process and the specific submission requirements that we're going to articulate. For example, one of the things that might be asked and is often asked is, can you provide financial references? I think that's a very reasonable question, right on its face, why would you debate that? In reality, if we're requiring all of these entities to create a new entity that then represents the totality of the effort for a specific team, there won't be any financial references. And we will have to make a decision, as kind of a matter of due diligence on our part, whether we're going to solicit financial references from the individual firms that may make up the entity. But those are the things that would normally happen without question and debate. So what we're saying to you is, is that each step in our process is about, we're thinking about why things are being requested or not. They aren't being included because it's convenient, they're being included because we believe that the answer is not, why not? The answer is, why? The question is, why are we doing this in order to assure it? I think I did overlook an important point. Partly along the way, or at least very early in your process, you articulated a very public vision and set of objectives. I believe I'm redundant in saying this RFP process is trying to stay true to that. I'm sure everyone won't fully agree with that, but I know that, from our standpoint, that is clearly the out-front intent to do. One way we're going to ensure that, that those wishes that were conveyed through the sentiments of the public is, prior to actual proposals being opened and evaluated, we anticipate an open house as part of our process. An open house that permits people to come in and look at individual submissions that will be due shortly thereafter, that we will take into consideration, based on comment cards or a process to be fully defined, that will reflect and be incorporated in our own individual reviews. So it will have an effect as developers provide questions or comments to those around them. We hope you'll be in circulation, will be in circulation, to hear some of that information. It won't form its own set of criteria, because these reactions are largely subjective, largely associated with those that are present, but they will be acknowledged by us in some way as part of the review process. I believe, in general terms, that describes the document, where we want to go with the document in the four or five weeks that it's outstanding. I think generally, it conforms, as I say, to the LOI in terms of the stuff that's submitted, but in more detail. It explains what staff, GAI, and you, if you're adversely astutely curious, who want to participate and follow on. I'm sure you'll be in touch with Felicia, who will keep monitoring our process. Biggies in some, City Hall, no City Hall, possible inclusions or exclusion. I would like to ask Laura to come up and, for sure, fill in any of the details that I missed, that she thinks is important, and even if I didn't miss them, she may have a different perspective on why they're more important than I've described them. So, Laura?
Thank you, Owen.
Hi, Laura Smith, you all have met me before, at this point. So, I actually don't have much to add to what Owen outlined. The one thing I would mention is, of course, you know, you all have your own requirements for disposition of property, you have procurement requirements, things like that, that are built into your charter, your code, all of those things. Those have to be folded into this process, this doesn't get to skirt those, but, you know, we've been in contact and in coordination with Felicia and her staff, and we feel confident that they have those well in hand, so that we know exactly what needs to go into this process, and that your legal counsel will also be reviewing the document to make sure that it's compliant with all of both your codes, as well as any statutory obligations as far as that's concerned. So I did want to make sure that you're clear, that the draft that you get will have been through Felicia's review and her staff, as well as your legal counsel, whenever we ask and bring that to you. So when Owen talked about it being a well-polished draft, we're hoping it will be very well polished, and that by the time that it's in front of you, short of any edits needing to be made, you'll quickly be ready to advertise and release that out to the selected group that will be responding. Let's see, the only other thing is, there will be, you know, your standard contract mechanisms. I think Owen spoke to development agreement, to an extent, that there will be some sort of an agreement that's going to have to be drafted, and how much of that is or is not included in the RFP will be stipulated by your procurement requirements and other code requirements. But for the moment, I think that covers most of our process, the RFP itself in terms of content, and then we can start rolling into our individual discussion topics. But I think, before we get into the discussion topics we have laid out in the agenda, you covered three things, if I'm not mistaken, that we need to build consensus on, before we get into our kind of big item discussion topics, which I know Felicia's also gotten some questions from you all, and she's provided answers to some of those, and I'm sure you may have follow-ups that you're looking for clarification on for some of those, in the event that that's necessary. So the first thing would be the financial contribution at time of submittal. So I know Owen talked about the, some sort of essentially commitment financially at time that the RFP responses are submitted. So you have five folks that you're going to be sending this out to, assuming all five respond, that they would make some sort of financial contribution or commitment to the city at such time as they submit their proposal back to you. So I think the question now, though, I don't think we want to get into what that number is today, because, again, as Owen said, I think we have some thought we want to have on that in terms of really what's manageable and the extent to which that's possible to achieve inside your own accounting firm and practices, and we'll get with Felicia on that, and come up with what an appropriate figure is that stays within that range, where, you know, it's not an Olympic hurdle, but it's something. So I think what we would need to decide is, is that something you all are interested in? Is it something you see value in? Or is this something that you think we probably want to hold off on?
I have a quick question. With your experience in the past with other municipalities, what kind of deposit have you required or municipalities have required? Can you give us just a couple of figures? And I'm sure the council has other questions also.
Owen, do you have a good example of a figure?
I do. Can you hear me, or do I need to?
You might want to come up.
Yeah, they want to make sure it's on the record.
Well, the simple answer is yes, there are other numbers. The more complicated answer is, their situations were very different. At the risk of actually entering this into the public record, some of the numbers were simply artifacts of convenience. The largest that I personally have been a party to, I think, was $250,000, but it was also a significant multimillion-dollar transaction. I think, let's talk about what the intent is. The intent is that it's more than the money you have sitting in the ashtray of your car. It's much bigger than a breadbox, it's smaller than a car. I mean, it's enough to seriously invoke, do we, as developers, do we have an interest in this project? And do we have a serious enough interest in this project to meet a deadline, at which point this money is now no longer just the cost of doing business? I would say, potentially, from others, it's been as low as $5,000. I've seen $25,000 and $50,000. So again, at the risk of making a joke, it's significantly more than just casual pocket change, but it should be no more than, you know, the cost that one would normally expect to pay for an asset of this size on some type of retainer or commitment fee. It might be 10%.
Okay, we have some other questions, okay? Councilmember Gannon?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick question, kind of piggyback on not so much the amount, but how often do you see such a requirement for that money in a public-private partnership versus a private development deal? Is that a common practice for both? Does it change the appetite of the developer when entering into a public-private partnership?
Well, there are numerous fees, so let's try to call them what I think they are and distinguish among them. You have an option fee, which is fundamentally non-refundable, is we're willing to remove a property from a private deal or from, from the marketplace, and I don't think it matters whether you're public or private. We're willing to remove this money, this property, from the marketplace for a certain period of time, while you fulfill your analytical requirements to decide if this is really something you want to pursue. And option money is normally not refundable. We have what we call earnest money, which is, I'm not sure that that's all fully fulfilled by what I'm describing. Earnest money is that we do intend to close, and this is our initial deposit on the house. And in the standard brokerage contract, that would typically be non-refundable, or refundable at the owner's option, not at the submitter's option. Here, I think we're following a, at least in my mind, we're following a modified earnest money proposal, in which, you know, we're going to be sensitive to the situation. We are going to make it clear that there's a date by which we expect things to be performed. And I think the reason we have to be a little bit flexible is because we have to perform. So back to, you know, are we sensitive stewards? I think the burdens we impose on the responders are partly shared by us, and we have obligations. So in the modified earnest money approach, there may be certain things that we have committed to producing. I don't know that I can articulate those would be, for the moment. Maybe we're required to provide a survey by a certain date. That date comes and goes, that becomes a possible out for the person that provided the earnest money, and maybe you're satisfied with that out for different reasons, and you've decided, yeah, you're fine with that. I hope that answers your question. But the idea is, is that it would be credited against whatever the purchase price might really be, so it's not just an added charge. It says, hey, we're serious, we want to move ahead.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on that particular topic from Vice Mayor?
I only have one question. I mean, looking at these five respondents, do you feel that this would be a barrier to all five of them responding?
No, that's an easy question, no. Certainly not to all.
Okay, good. Well, the thing I would like to suggest, I think that the actual amount of the deposit that we're, I mean, if we have consensus, I think you should, you guys should work with the city manager and the city staff, and I think they should come back to us. I mean, does everyone agree with that? Is that okay? That you work that out, and then we'll discuss the deposit another time, the amount?
Would you be asking if you have consensus now that we're requiring the deposit?
Well, that and letting the city staff figure out the amount.
I think that's what, the answer initially he's after is that, are we comfortable with some form of a earnest money effort, essentially putting skin in the game for said developers?
Right. A potentially non-refundable earnest money, where you share, I want to be more specific, if I may, where you're sharing some obligations to produce or perform on your part.
So all five proposals will be a deposit, all five, and then none of them are refundable?
No. Ah, thank you for bringing that up, no, 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 no. What would happen is, is on the premise that they're rendering them, they're all five non-refundable, when we rank and choose to negotiate with that one party, we immediately start that clock ticking with that one, the others are returned. So, the selected developer, and if that's what you meant, that I think, yeah, that could be a barrier, could be. But I'm not sure that would be either, I haven't tested that proposition, but that's not the intent.
Okay. Do we want to discuss timeline? He mentioned a four-week process for the timeline, which be the end of January. You also mentioned you wanted to increase that timeline, maybe give the proposals more time?
Mayor, if I may interject, we need consensus on whether or not we're going to require the deposit.
Okay.
Yeah, if you want to just kind of go down the line. I'm happy to start. I think it is important to have some kind of deposit, I think it signals a commitment on both sides. I think it's important that we see a developer come to the city with something that's all about us and not just all about them. I respect that everybody had a different approach to responding to the letter of interest, and some of them were a little bit more like a stack of resumes, as opposed to ideas that we could really implement. And I get that, you know, we asked for certain things, and, you know, some folks interpreted it one way or another, but I want it to be very clear on both sides of this process, especially because our residents want to see that transparency, they want to see a commitment to create something that's for this entire community and not just a way for them to translate land into dollars for them. It has to be a collaborative process, and I think our citizens have shown us, especially in the past year, that they are interested in collaborating, those Q and A sessions, those open houses. I think our city has made an extensive effort to encourage that public participation. We recently approved a public participation plan, and I think we should make every effort to honor that and let the other side know, through our mutual commitment, that we, you know, once we choose you, we intend to go the distance. We want to make it clear that this is what we're requiring of you, and if you can't abide by that, then, then there will be, you know, for example, a consequence. We had a prior developer, and you're right, the more you make clear on the front end, the less confusion on the back end. We had a prior negotiation kind of fall apart because something fell apart on the back end that wasn't clear or was misinterpreted purposefully. It's not, it doesn't matter now, but we want to get it right this time, and I think that is a proper mechanism, according to industry standards, in order to do it.
Councilmember Nell?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also in favor of requiring considerations for all of the submitters. Thank you, Mayor. I'm also in favor of requiring considerations for all of the submitters. And definitely would like to stress that we don't create a barrier where we suddenly start filtering down to four or three. So that's something for you all to keep in mind. To be determined, but to keep in mind because I don't think we want that to be the sole means of, oh, now we're down to four or three. We want other means or really all five to get back to us in order to, as well as the community, to say, here's what's out there. Here's your five choices.
Thank you. Councilmember Greber?
I concur. It's a cost of doing business. Sort of if you want to have us consider what you're proposing, then we will need you to require, or we will require you to give some, is it modified earnest money? That's a new one. That's a new one for me. Right, no, yeah.
Great money.
Okay.
Add it to Urban Dictionary.
But yes, absolutely.
Vice Mayor?
Absolutely, Mayor. I'm in favor.
All right. Yes, I agree with Councilmember Knapp. All five, we want all five to come with a proposal so that we can all work with them and talk with each one of them and decide which one we want to move forward with. And great presentation. Thank you.
All right. So then the next topic would be the creation of a legal entity specific to the project to be identified in the proposal. So that would say that, you know, oftentimes these type of projects are going to have a team. It's not just going to be one company, one entity, one organization. It's usually going to be some sort of a teamed effort. And, you know, you've got five people responding. There's a good chance the majority of them are going to be a team of multiple specialties and multiple entities. So in creating that unique legal entity for this project, which is ultimately who will be signing off and submitting, they would also then become your direct point of contact, point of negotiation going forward. So the drawback to that, as Owen mentioned, is then if you did want to get some sort of financial references for that entity, because it's newly created, there would be no financial history for them. So there is that question there, but the benefits may outweigh those potential drawbacks in terms of those lack thereof of financial references. But at this point, I mean, it's definitely important to decide whether you would prefer for them to come through as one newly established legal entity or at least one uniform legal entity, even if it's already existing, specific to this project.
Okay. Councilmember Gannon, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. If we required a performance bond, would the bond be secured in the name of this individual entity? Or would it be backed by, do you know what I'm saying? In other words, could we obtain those financial reassurances? Because like, I read the statute, right? So, okay, we shall consider all such redevelopment or rehabilitation proposals and the financial and legal ability of the persons making such proposals to carry them out. So I'm thinking right away, we just had some negotiations for the library site, right? Part of that was a list of 17 things. I can't remember if it was 17. But one of those things was a performance bond to ensure that we're not left with half of a development. Do you have any understanding of it, if those are typically secured in that one entity name? If it matters?
So I know, and Felicia, correct me if I'm wrong, but you have a bonding obligation already in your code, correct?
No, we do not have it in the code. But we have, it is a requirement for the upcoming development agreement.
Okay. So then you'll have that requirement for the bond to exist either way?
Okay, so even if we don't have an entity that has past historical financial statements, we have the reassurance of that as for completion of this particular entity?
I believe that should be adequate.
Yeah, it should be. It should be adequate. I mean, it may not be the same laydown that you're going to get by calling ABC Harden Construction Company. That's not what we're talking about here. And I think what we're also saying is that this entity is responsible for seeing all of these pieces pulled together.
Right.
Because you are not going to be negotiating a bond with the contractor. You're not going to be negotiating a bond with the architect, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Like, that's not your business.
Right.
Hence, the spokesperson for this group, that is now their responsibility. And this is when you start to say, hey, one of you is the spokesperson for this group, somebody's going to sign this development agreement. Somebody buying the property. I don't want to say that it's just a layover and secure. I don't want to know that that's going to happen. But this is a normal and customary, and I think, an important part of the process.
Right. In a related way, are the pretty pictures that we get back with these letters, sometimes they're rendering, sometimes it's a completed development. And sometimes it's difficult to tell if these were actually completed. You know, if these come along with the resumes and then, okay, well, did you actually do this? Or is this just something that you designed? When you get these kind of submittals from a group of architects and developers and, you know, it is a conglomerate that can help, you know, be narrowed by that one entity. But when, you know, when we have that entity that now has less than what we even have in here sometimes, is there a danger to that? What's your experience with?
Well, you still have your teaming. Those teams still exist. But they're all agreeing to basically have this umbrella entity that's going to act as the singular point on the project. They're still going to, you're still going to get examples of past projects just like that. The one thing, you know, we did run into with the LOI was a question of, well, what role did they play in these projects?
Right.
That would be far more specifically laid out as to exactly the way that they need to describe the project, what their responsibility was, what their role was, you know, when they began with it, whether it's completed, its current stage of completion, its funding strategy, all of those things are going to be much more detailed in the RFP. The reason that they were so kind of general in the LOI was because it is a less specific process. So, yes, that is one of the things that we know for sure. And I think it's even in our list today as a topic, is the requirements of the team and prior experience.
Exactly.
So, I mean, those are things where in this situation, you're not just going to get a pretty picture that says this project and a description of what it is.
It was never built, but I designed this.
Right. It was pretty.
Yeah, considering the low.
And you want to make sure it's one where they didn't just have a very small piece, you know? Here's this beautiful project. We dealt with the land rights.
Boring.
But I didn't design it. I didn't build it. I didn't bring it to market. But I dealt with the land rights on it. You know, those are things we want to avoid. We want to make sure that they played a substantial role in the full development of those projects that they give as examples of experience.
Considering the low cost to create an entity, an LLC or a corporation in Florida, I don't think it's too much to ask to create a single entity point of communication for purposes of negotiation and submittals, but.
Councilmember Knapp?
I agree with that, but just trying to play devil's advocate a little bit. You kind of laid out the positives and potential drawbacks for requiring it. What, would there be any benefit or not? Or the drawbacks, I know you kind of pointed out, there's not that single person that can sign and kind of speak on behalf. Is there anything else that we should be aware of as that being the alternative?
I mean, I think you may get into sort of a group negotiation, which is probably something you want to avoid. You'd rather have one-on-one conversations as opposed to, you know, having three or four principals from three or four firms participating in that discussion. So you want to have the singular point. And this kind of does that in a way that prevents any bleed over or potential corruption of that method. Especially whenever you deal with situations where a firm, just depending on the level of, the number of employees of a firm, that those could have some changeover and turnover and things like that. You want to avoid that. And so this, creating the specialized entity with the specialized person for that entity, then helps you kind of control that. Because the negotiation process is not going to be done in a day or a week. It's going to be timely.
Sure.
Okay, the city attorney would like to say something?
Yes, absolutely.
I'm really not suggesting that you go down this path of creating a new entity for the purposes of doing this project. Any entity that is going to be responding to the request for proposals is going to have significant interest in moving forward in their own name. If they have different contractors or architects working underneath them, that's, it's an issue with them. You're going to be dealing with one entity. You don't want an entity that is just a shell, that's just created for the purpose of this project. You have no one to look to because there are no assets in that shell corporation. So I would really suggest that we go down the same path as we've done before in these downtown development projects. And that is to work with the individual or the corporation or the entity that is responding to the proposal. They're going to have sufficient enough assets to move forward. I'm really concerned that, you know, that you rely upon the creation of this shell corporation. There's nothing there when you need to, you need to, you know, to look to them to do something. So, I mean, if you want to come to a consensus that that is a possibility, then that's fine. But I wouldn't want to go down that path of saying they are to create an entity just for the sole purpose of negotiating a deal with the city of Oldsmar.
Okay, the city manager, do you have any comments on that?
If I can comment on that, I am not going to debate your city attorney. I mean, obviously, he has a superior position here, so this is not about that. I'm not even going to disagree with him. I think that is certainly one of the downsides. I think the similar downside, which I would like to hear him comment on and express absolutely, and I think he's already addressed it, is we want absolute crystal clarity that whoever signs this submission is the spokesperson and legally responsible party that we are negotiating with. And if city council thinks, city attorney thinks we can do that, then I, I'm fine with that. I think we share the same objective, even if we may have different opinions on how it would unfold.
Okay.
That's the single most important objective, a point of legal certainty.
Okay, I have a question from the Vice Mayor Bartman.
At the, thank you, Mayor. At the risk of going optional on this, could it be put in as an optional and scored appropriately on our scoring sheet? Or are we getting too complex?
I think city council would already suggest it's a low-scoring priority. I don't know that I have an opinion. I think you might want to ask him. I feel like anything that eventually becomes an option here is something you're going to have to negotiate. And if you said, we're going to do it within 30 days for the sake of discussion after you've been selected, I'm not happy with that. I'd rather have crystal certainty that the person submitting the proposal on day one, whoever he, she, or it is, is the person assuming responsibility. That's the mission here. It's not, it's not a group. This is not a group. It may be a team, but it is not a group.
So, so what you're saying is, we go through this, when we go into the development agreement process, we choose the RFP, we go into the development agreement process. We get into that process. If there is entity exists, Felicia's negotiating with one person. If it doesn't exist, she's negotiating with we don't know how many.
It's by definition a creature of multi-hence.
I don't know if it's really played out like that, though, because it seems like with the library project, for example, like, there was Devon Rushnell LLC. I'm sure that was created for the purpose of submitting the library project. I don't know that, but then it was very clear, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, city manager, but it was very clear with whom she was actually negotiating. Devon Rushnell.
That's correct. And it has been our experience in my six-year tenure with the other proposals that we have received, that there was a legal entity that took the lead on the projects and that the other ones were subconsultants to that.
So with all due respect to city council, again, I am not debating with him. I'm just sharing a different, I'm not even sure it's different. I'm sharing a point of view, is we're trying to get to that point in advance of it occurring after the fact. And if legal counsel thinks that that will be perhaps circumvented, I'm fine with that. I defer to him totally. But I think our mission is to be sure we have this single point and in effect, everybody's acting as a subconsultant to that entity.
All right. Councilmember Greber, do you have any comments, questions?
I didn't quite understand creating an LLC or however it would be, a corporation. And as Councilmember Gannon had alluded to, you can do that pretty quick. And so you'd have a direct point of contact, but, you know, I see it all the time, you know, we're condominium unit 12 LLC. Well, I wonder what condo unit they were going to buy. Like, it's this, you just create it, you buy it. That's how it goes. I haven't, the experience that we've had over the last, you know, since I've been in council the last couple of years, there's been points of contact. So I don't, I see what you're saying. There might be too many chefs in the kitchen. But I've never, I don't see how that's going to raise to a monumental issue. You're negotiating specifically generally with one person or party. They have a legal entity set up. They generally have their teams in place from my experience. So there was a little bit, I was caught off guard. So I don't think that I would want to proceed with it as making it a requirement. If we deem that it's necessary to say you need to have a point person, I'm sure they're going to say, okay, no problem. We have a point person. I mean, this is what they do. This is their job function.
If you want to close a deal with the city of Oldsmar, you better, you better tell us who I can email.
Hey, I need to talk to your manager. It's like, oh, that's easy. She's right there, right? I mean, that's the same kind of thing, at least in just from a practical point of view. I don't think it's necessary.
I'm going to agree with our legal counsel and go with what Tom has recommended for us. And does anybody else want to chime in on that?
I think it's just making it abundantly clear that we want, as part of the submission or who the submitter is, that they are the primary point of contact moving forward from that deadline. Then that pretty much establishes it.
I agree with that. Does everyone else agree or any other comments?
Bearing in mind, I don't think this is inconsistent with any points of view. A check is going to accompany this proposal, and someone is to be signing that check. And my presumption at the moment is the person or company signing that check is this person. And we want to ensure that that continues to be that person. We're all agreeing.
I think we're on agreement with that, correct?
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, so the only other thing is then, in that regard, the requirement for financial references as part of the proposal. So.
Given the past, the past history, do you get financial?
I mean, that's kind of, again, project-specific. But Owen, what would you say in terms of requirement for financial references with the submittal? Because we won't true, I mean.
This ties back to what we just said. If person ABC represents himself as the spokesperson for the group and signs the check, with the presumption there's $5,000 in the bank, that certainly isn't enough to finance and fund anything. I will say that our experience has been, is prior experience in funding anything is as important, if not more important, than financial references. I will also tell you, financial references need to be pursued. That is not part of our scope because we can't assume the financial liability of saying we validated their financial condition. So, you know, the main issue here is getting release and permission. And part of the RFP would be the forms to do that, which we have zero problem with. Following up to see if various parties that are identified in this arrangement are those you want to do business with. Now frankly, I consider it kind of a, it strikes me as one of those things when I, if I were sitting where you are, I'm going, well, of course I want financial references. I get that. So this isn't an attempt to diminish that. It's a, can you efficiently, correctly, and objectively perform anything more than a casual D and B on a quick turnaround? And how much reliance you want to put on that? So we do intend to really drill down on prior financial performance. And there may be something that you feel like you want us to investigate on that.
Okay. Councilmember Gannon, go ahead.
I'm curious as to Felicia and Tom's experience with this. My inclination is, yeah, I want to see your finances. I want to see as much as you can show me. I'm responsible to the people who have elected me.
The only caution and another viewpoint to offer the council is that with the caveat that that doesn't become a barrier to putting a proposal in. So perhaps it is, you know, if you choose to rank, then maybe at that time, we could. So, perhaps it is, you know, if you choose to rank, then maybe at that time, we could, just another viewpoint, just to provide you an alternative to, to how it could be done, is that you could ask for financial references at, at the time that you rank them, just to, to caution about if that might become a barrier to submitting a proposal.
I kind of agree with that.
Could we make that part of the, the RFP process, like letting them know ahead of time?
Certainly could be. Well, let me, if I make a put that...
Yeah, requests for financials may be made at the time of ranking.
Owen, can I put this in sort of a context?
Sure.
I can't say that it is a total nonstarter. I want, I want to be clear. I think what would be a total nonstarter, again, choice of words is important, is if we said, "For the sake of discussion, you need to provide certified audited financial statements." This is like, we would never ask for audited financial statements for two reasons. Is they aren't going to provide them, and most people don't have audited financial statements. So, it's sort of like, yeah, that seems a sensible thing to ask, but fundamentally, no, it's not. This starts to stray into that, and in Florida, you know, the, these are things that, or can be considered intensely circumspect to the business of the provider. So, I, I think what you'd want to work with if you chose to do it is something upon selection, before we, even before we cash their check, perhaps.
Okay. Councilmember Gannon, are, um, happy, anything?
Nothing additional. Sounds good.
Anybody over here?
No.
I kind of agree with what Felicia said. I, I, I'm going to ask the other councilmembers for consensus, but I really do agree that after we do a, a survey of the top three, maybe, or the top two, we ask them for the financials then. Does anyone, have any other comments on that?
The only comment I have is, in my daily business, I respond to RFPs, and I've never provided financials on the first go. So, I think asking for them in due, due time, yes, but not, I don't think so.
Us doing our due diligence.
I think right now that the focus is on the proposals, right? So, we're going to make it more difficult for you to propose something. I don't think that's where we're at.
Right, exactly.
I think, sounds like you might have consensus.
All right, we have consensus.
If, if I may, one other comment. I, I want to distinguish, I mean, I'm agreeing with the conversation, but I want to make sure, full disclosure, there, there's two different levels of financial activity occurring here, right? There's the, can they actually buy your property? They have enough money to buy your property? That's one activity, which is not to be confused with the whole activity of actually building a development on top of that property. And that's a totally different set of exercises, and, you know, we have to figure out now whether we need to deal with one or both. And in part of that signatory process, the person submitting the proposal is representing that all of these financial resources through their, their alliance, if you will, their association of firms, is going to be able to produce that.
Right, so we don't fall in love with, and the public doesn't fall in love with, a hundred million dollar proposal, that they don't have the wherewithal to actually build.
Right, right. So, that, that's one reason. So many of these parts are interwoven, and I don't want to even speak to the legal aspects, but, but performance and practicality ties these things together in, in pretty specific ways. So, the spokesperson, you know, may not necessarily be the most affluent of the group. The spokesperson may not necessarily, at that moment, have the capital to either close or develop. He may also not necessarily be in one of the three disciplines that he considers key. He may just be a coordinating person, which is one reason we believe that the person signing the document will personally have had to show that he's had participation and the nature of that financial participation in other activities. Going back to what I said, past performance, no guarantee of the future, but it's a heck of a lot better than, "I haven't done this before." So, I don't think we really sorted that out as well as I would have liked to have seen in the LOI, honestly. So, focusing on those discrete obligations and activities is what we're intending to do here.
Okay. So, I think we're ready to move into discussion topics?
Sure.
Because those were really the three things that we talked about in the beginning, that we would need to get consensus on, just sort of housekeeping items, essentially. So, the first item that we're going to talk about is City Hall.
Okay.
So, I know several of you had sent questions and comments, or sought additional information from Felicia, and she did share her responses to those with us, as well as those of you that she shared them with. So, I would like to afford her the ability to talk a little bit about that information, because I know there's been some back and forth. So, I think maybe we can allow that to happen, and we are here to basically provide support as needed. But I think y'all have a pretty good understanding of what your goals are for the site, and now we just need to really get everybody on board with, is City Hall guaranteed part of the site, and you want them to include it? Or would you rather City Hall be excluded from the development program and held for whatever your decisions may be in the future to do with that site?
All right, Felicia, you are, thank you.
If, if the council wishes, I can provide a brief summary of the, of the questions that were asked and the answers.
Sure, please.
So, the, the first question that was asked was, how much is the deferred maintenance on City Hall that's expected to occur in the next 10 years? So, the building age is 32 years at this point. We have, it's an aging product. We calculated that we have about 1.1 million 665,000 of identified deferred maintenance. This isn't emergencies, these are things that are already scheduled.
Or if there's a hurricane, or if...
Or perhaps a hurricane, or any other damage. It includes things like carpet replacement. The parking lots need full reconstruction. You can actually see in one of the parking lots, we have coned off parking spaces because it no longer meets ADA accessibility. The main entrance is, does not meet any current code for hardening and hurricanes. Just, just that alone is about $400,000 to replace the glass entrance, sealing the building, roof replacements, the concrete work out in the front. HVAC, we have five systems and a one server room unit, and to replace the generator. So, those are just basic items. Another question that was asked was the deferred maintenance on the, on the municipal services building and that cost. So, that building is, is 25 years old, and we're looking at, again, the same, the same type of maintenance requirements. We're looking at about 565,000 for the municipal services complex. That's our, that's our building that serves as a public works, leisure services buildings, on commerce. So, that includes kitchen remodels, window replacements of 100,000. Those windows are, are leaking currently, carpeting, exterior painting, fencing gates, generator, HVAC systems, garage doors, and resurfacing the parking lot. The, the next question that I, that was asked was the CIP costs that we've already incurred for these buildings. So, in the, in the past five years, we have incurred about $400,000 worth of maintenance projects on City Hall, and about 100 and, 101,000 on the municipal services complex. The, the next question is the approximate acreage of the whole site, including City Hall. We, we've talked about it, you know, that number fluctuates as to how much of the land you're counting, how much of the right-of-ways we're counting. So, the, the entire, it's, it's composed of many parcels. The entire boundary is 7.99 acres, so about eight acres. And that includes all the right-of-ways and alleys. So, that includes all of that. If you took them out, that would be 6.69 acres.
Felicia, real quick, could you, for the record, point out, without City Hall, then, what is the current acreage that would, has been under consideration in the past?
So, the, the current consideration for the, the last proposal that we received from Woodfield Development, it was about 4, 4.85 for the, for the main structure. You remember, it had like a hotel placement on the corner, about an acre. So, about six acres to, give or take. It really depends on where that line is.
Thank you.
We asked about the amount of prior appraisals for the City Hall site. We haven't gotten it appraised recently, and the last appraisal was about 720,000 per acre, and that was in, in 2019, early on. Asked about the cost associated previously with discussing about buying or leasing in a parking garage. If you all remember, Simone Development, several years ago, submitted something, and so that figure and that proposal was $20,000 for each parking space. And then it was a, a contribution, about $2 million was discussed from the city for 100 parking spaces. The approximate cost to lease space temporarily while the new City Hall building is being constructed, if, if that were a reality for up to about five years, that's a moving target. So, it, it's going to, it would take a while for even, you know, permitting and planning and all that thing. So, we're talking about, you know, something that, that is in an off year, that is very unpredictable at this moment in a market. I, we can't predict what's going to happen six months from now, much less when we would actually need the space. But, but right now, the average square foot of commercial space in Oldsmar is $18 per square feet. So, while we take up 16,000 square feet in City Hall, we, we don't need all that space. And so, I, I think we could relocate some of the offices to other buildings. And so, for temporary space, about 8,000 square feet of space, I am looking at a spend of about $144,000. The next question was, how much would be the approximate ad valorem to be collected by the city, you know, for development? So, so, so just in general terms, our mileage rate's 4.05. So, a hundred million dollar investment into our community that would create ad valorem taxes would come out to 405,000, right? However, we calculate taxes because of prepayments at about a 95% of that rate. So, for a hundred million dollar investment, we're looking at creating revenue source to the city for 384,750. For a 150 million dollar investment, we're looking at 577,000, 125. For 200 million dollar investment, we're looking at 769,500 in ad valorem taxes. And for 250 million dollar investment, we're looking at 961,875, and that's on an annual basis. So, that would be taking all eight acres and the approximate price of what that is at a current market level. You know, again, who knows what the construction value will be. What are, what are some of the potential options if we were going to look at a new City Hall? So, so that, of course, is a moving target. That takes, that does take significant amount of study. We would have to perform a facility assist, assessment, space, planning analysis to determine exactly what our needs would be, a site analysis, and, and, you know, whether or not we have seven acres sitting over where municipal services complex is. That's out of a flood zone, so that could be a potential site. So, you know, but we have, we have also a current need for a hardened, elevated, localized structure outside of a flood zone, preferably, for emergency operations center. We, we don't have one right now. That, that is extremely challenging for us, and, and given our vulnerability and location, and flood zone elevations, and storm surge expectant from the last storm, 15 feet, we need our own dedicated space. I'm going to talk more about that in a moment, but, you know, at, at present, our facilities are not constructed to accommodate an EOC. The, our proximity to water and low elevation is, makes us particularly vulnerable. It would, having an established EOC reduces our, centralizes our functions and reduces the time that we can respond. Another question was, what would be some of the potential offices that we could include in a new complex? Right now, we are in different locations throughout the city, so this, contemplating a, a new facility would give us the opportunity to look at centralizing administrative and operational functions. And for instance, Communication Marketing and Arts is located at the library. That's because a space is available there. We also have leisure services administrative offices at State Street Center. We also have, you know, some, some, for instance, technical services as part of the Public Works Department is located at City Hall, where the primary functions are located either out at MSC or RO plant or WRF. The next question is, is, is there, is there going to be potential disruption to our city services because of, you know, reloading, relocating us to a temporary location? We would ensure that there's no disruption to city services. We could relocate some services to other facilities. For instance, you know, even the art gallery that we have at City Hall right now, we could locate to State Street or the library. City Hall has lighting in program. We could relocate and look at one of the parklands for that. Other services may use interim space. Because our shift of the building permits to Pinellas County, really, our visitation is, I mean, it's, it's a dozen people or less to our building to, to see us. We conduct a lot of our business online now, so, you know, utility billing generates probably the most traffic. So, you know, if we relocated maybe that function to State Street, it's just a different building in the same location. And as we move, move through the years, even our utility billing, visitation has gone down, as, as people on, fully adopt mobile applications and online payments.
I'm trying, hey?
Another, another, the, the next question was, you know, how, what are our logistical challenges to relocating to our, our current emergency ops? Not having an emergency operations center is, is problematic. And our private partner has generously donated and supported our city efforts, and we are very, very grateful. There's no guarantee that we can continue to use that facility. As companies transform, we don't have a current lease agreement with them for that operation. So, in addition, there's hardly any other spaces that could shelter the amount of people that we need. You know, we, just a reminder, we sheltered 110 people during Ian. And so, for our relocation efforts, you can imagine the flurry of activity that takes place before storm for city staff. We have a very small staff. I've, I've, I've provided the laundry list of items, but some of our resources are, are taken by relocating us. So, that means that we're unable to use those resources to do other things in the city, because can't do two things at one time. We relocate, we relocate large refrigerator units so that we can house an EOC. So, we did look at the cost for doing that. To fully activate us, it costs about $6,500, it's just to, to move us. And then we have training events about four times a year, that's about another two grand a pop to relocate us for that. The next question was the approximate duration of time to plan, permit, and build a new City Hall. These are not quick items to do. So, to think about that, I looked at some of our neighbors. Largo's in the process of building theirs right now. It took them 18 months to design, and it's estimated to take about 24 months to construct. Dunedin is hoping to open up their new City Hall next month. It's taken them about three years in construction. I went back, they have been planning, and they had to acquire land and looking at all their, so, so they've been planning for a long time, but it's about three years under construction. So, as a rough estimate, I, I think it would probably take us to, to talk about an effort like this, about five years, really, the, the time we do all the feasibility studies and the space analysis, and the planning and permitting, something like that, looking at even the way that we have outdoor storage and, and those sorts of things if we were going to move to the municipal services site and construction. So, I, I think about five years if we, if we started today. The next question was, what are our financial options to build a new City Hall? So, if a new complex was, is served City Hall and emergency operation functions, we, we're in a very good position to seek resiliency grants and a... we, we're in a very good position to seek resiliency grants and a direct appropriation. If those don't come to fruition, because grant money is, you know, something that we've been successful with, I can't guarantee success in the future. But because of the recent injection of ARPA funds to our, to our, our, our financial capacity and other grant funding, we're very strong position to utilize future penny proceeds. Part of our enterprise funds or utility funds could possibly be utilized if those functions are located and to issue a new bond for the remaining parts of the construction. Also, if we were to contemplate a City Hall, you think about that five-year horizon. That gives us some time to actually put aside money in the budget as we progress through the years when we're planning. So those were the, the questions. Oh, I'm sorry, I received another question, two more that I had responded separately for. So I'm gonna pull out that sheet. But, but the first one was, what, what are the potential implications on the development due to flood zone, base flood elevation, height of the building to make it like a two-story or a three-story? The site is located in the special flood high area in Zone AE, and it's got a current base flood elevation of, of 11 feet. So residential development needs to be designed to the base, to DFE, the design flood elevation, which could be, it's either BFE plus one, or we use an 18-inch rule, which is 18-inch above the crown of the adjacent roadway. The building height is measured from the DFE and not the ground elevation. So an option could be to require some minimum fill or stem wall design. Commercial buildings are designed to DFE and can be dry flood-proofed up to DFE. So that's sometimes, in most of the occasions, and I think we've talked about this before, in a mixed-use building, vertically-integrated buildings, that's why you see the commercial on the bottom floor. And so typically, dry flood-proofing option minimizes the amount of fill. Commercial building designed to DFE could have some challenges with ADA accessibility and because ADA ramps do have to follow the slope. The site's also located in a coastal high hazard area, which is different than the special flood hazard area. And so any developer would have to meet the emergency management requirements if they wanted to use the recently adopted density incentive. And the terms of the extent of the emergency management requirements are also negotiated at the time of the development agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Lastly, I got one last question. And that's, and that's how much do we pay for the land?
Oh, yes.
So, so total, of all the parcels we paid over the years, we paid $3,675,652.3. So about $3.7 million.
How'd he get that $3.00?
Plus $1.4 million to build City Hall.
Plus $1.
So we're at five, we're at five.
All right, well, we're gonna, we're gonna get started, we're gonna start at this end here. Vice Mayor, you wanna go first? Do you have any comments or questions on whether we wanna keep City Hall or remove it?
I, you know, looking at this and looking five years down the road and looking at the building condition, I think it's smart. I think we include it.
So keep it.
Sense, keep it, or keep, put it in the proposal.
Put it in the proposal. All right. Councilmember Graber.
I think it also should be included, especially of the way that we were just discussing. And Felicia was, if we can move out of flood zone where the MSC is, I mean, if that's contemplated, I know there'd be so many different steps in order to go through that. But cutting down from 16,000 square feet to 8,000 square feet, still having the same function, but doing it more collaboratively, having everyone in that building. You know, the, the front of the building's made out of glass, you know, it's gonna take
Facing that.
$400,000.
Facing the water.
Facing the water made out of glass. I mean, say it out loud sometimes, you know, it's just not safe. At least I don't think so. And when Ian was coming through, all the things that we were going through, another consideration was, yeah, that giant big plane of glass like right at City Hall. So when that idea, you know, started becoming sort of part of the different things we were hearing, I wasn't so sure, would it be included in, you know, a separate facility? Would we be building a standalone facility, those sorts of things? I mean, that'll all get ironed out, but making it as a part of, yes, I want it included, my answer to that would be yes.
All right, thank you. Councilmember now.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, when I think about the state of the current building and what we, the bullet we just dodged, the saying of prepare for the worst and hope for the best is not something that we could confidently say that we are prepared for the worst. We do the best we can, right? But the building is not well-prepared for what could be the worst. And to make considerations now and hopefully take advantage of certain funding avenues that would ease the financial strain on us is certainly an option to be explored. I know some of the comments that came up before in terms of the overall concept of previous proposals, the, the general scope of the land, you know, there was definitely a desire to have some parkland. So, and the current location of where it kinda got slotted kinda made sense, but there were definitely safety concerns. So by including City Hall, yes, that creates more potentially developable land, but it also, I think, provides more of the opportunity to have open park space or something that affronts State Street when, when we see a project come to fruition. So, yes.
Thank you.
Throw it in.
You got it. Councilmember Gannon.
So I know it will surprise exactly no one, I'm looking at the former mayor's face, that all those questions came from me. Sorry, guys. So, and I'm really grateful for all of the responses from city staff and for Felicia. So a wise vice mayor, not too long ago, brought up an idea of thinking outside the box. Vice Mayor Buckman talked about potentially leasing space. At first, I was like, wait, wait, wait. That doesn't make any sense. And, you know, it's, it's interesting when you take a step back, and we've done a lot of work, a lot of collaboration over the last year or so. And, you know, when I started to look at this triangle property, which is difficult in and of itself for a developer to, to work on, and, and we saw that. And in talking with Felicia and learning about $2 million in deferred maintenance, no way to have an emergency operations center that functions for our city, our staff, and for our community. The ad valorem dollars that we could potentially get to offset the cost of leasing space temporarily, you know, in the long run, then the potential for funding after, Mayor, you attended those resiliency programs with the city manager and you, you know, participated and learned about ways that we need to harden our buildings and even our parks, small things that we can do and ways that we can be more resilient. I know city staff has, Ashley Painter has worked extraordinarily hard. And that cool presentation that you showed us with the people from Switzerland or wherever they were from, Finland.
Belgium.
Belgium, Finland?
Netherlands.
In any event. But half a million dollars in the past five years, and then I'm thinking to myself, okay, wait, we were gonna pay how much for parking spots? I was like, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. A better use of the dollars that we have might be to put it not toward parking spots and leasing, you know, parking spots or what have you. Or putting, sinking another $2 million in deferred maintenance for, you know, City Hall and then another half a million for Municipal Services Center on Commerce would be to put that toward designing something that really is for our residents, for the future of our city, and not tying us to that City Hall in almost perpetuity or rebuilding it in that location in perpetuity, which doesn't serve us 'cause of the, the flood issue. And then taking it out gives us the potential to provide our residents a better product here. Doing some quick and dirty math, eight acres divided by 30 units per acre, I don't wanna say the word, but that density puts us at 240. So it automatically, by including more land, we automatically decrease the density and address that concern. There's a potential to include more space for the public, a product that people want, a better concept. It's already been discussed by our residents in the past and even today that the building as it is, while wonderful at its time, is not particularly compatible with some of the designs that we're seeing and some of the designs that we've all expressed interest in seeing. And of course, the, the tax consequences that, that I already mentioned. So I think including those additional 1.3 acres is really smart. It helps us capitalize on our land and, and our taxes. It helps us make a better use of our tax dollars plans for the future. You know, I could see a City Hall where we have that community space that people have been asking for, where we have a consolidated emergency operations center, where we have our leisure services folks, you know, all in one building, and our, you know, technical services, you know, next to the buildings where they, you know, perform their duties. So I see a lot of upside to it, and I can't, other than, you know, the sentimental attachment that I'm sure we all have in some way to the building across the street, I can't see the downside. So hence the question.
Thank you. So in a nutshell, I think we have a consensus that we're gonna include the City Hall in the proposal. City manager Felicia Donnelly and I have talked about it several times. I brought it up before at a city council meeting. I think it should be included in the bid process. We also talked about, since it is gonna be a five-year development plan, it probably is gonna take five or the next generation of whoever's up here will be involved in that process. And Felicia and I talked about maybe just leasing the, the building while the construction is going on until the city council and the city staff can figure out a plan to build a new City, City Hall for a smaller City Hall for, for the future of the city. So yes, I think the consensus is put it in the proposal, and we'll move forward from there.
Okay, so it would be your prefer, so I just wanna make sure we're clear because you will obviously, you know, depending on the teardown process and construction schedule, obviously that building's gonna go away. Felicia laid out a number of options for how, you know, your existing services could be relocated, but at any rate, it sounded like you still would need about 8,000 square feet to rent somewhere while you're building your new facilities, especially during planning and all of that. So the question would be, is it your, is it your desire to have them retain the building as long as possible for you to lease it from them while they're doing construction in other parts of the site? Or is it your desire to have space built within the new development that you could then rent from them, understanding that there's gonna be a period of time in between there where your building's gonna come down and they're not gonna be done building yet? And you'd be elsewhere.
I personally, me, would like to lease the building until city staff, city, city manager can find a place that we can have our, you know, our City Hall at. But that would be my suggestion, and if anybody else has any other comments. But I'd like us to be able to lease it while the developing is going on or the proposal's being built and the surveying's going on. We can lease the building until we find a location. Do you wanna comment on that, Felicia, at all?
I, I think that, just to, to, to clarify, the, the leasing of the site during the construction. And I, I think that, that Laura, you may be asking, are we gonna ask the developer to provide us some temporary space inside their new development to which we would lease like any, any other office space from the developer?
Like here's your incentive.
Right, so the question then becomes, you know, the building itself is, if it's included, is gonna have to be taken down 'cause there's gonna have to be obviously work done to the land. There's gonna be degrading and elevation's tough. You've got right-of-ways in there. If you decide to vacate those right-of-ways, those need to be taken up. All of that's gonna have to happen as part of site prep. So in that time period when that building comes down, you'll have some period of time until new space is built. Even if you were to lease space from the new development, there will be a period of time where you'll be leasing elsewhere or having, you know, moving your services around so that you can be accommodated in your existing facilities elsewhere. So I think the question is, do you want to include in the RFP a requirement that they provide some sort of lease agreement for you to rent space from them or give you the option to rent from them some sort of amount of office space in their new development? Or do you simply want to say, okay, we'll, we'll sort out leasing space ourselves?
Felicia, would you mind commenting on that, please?
I think it's like an incentive, like, like here's your first tenant, like, cool for you.
I, I think there's, there, there may be some advantages to having us as a, as a first tenant, a tenant in a building. It also may help us serve as that catalyst for their, any of their retail office space that, that they may have as part of their product.
So you, so I, from what we're hearing today, I just wanna be clear. It doesn't sound like you want to require that space be provided for you all to lease from them during your construction process, but you would like for the potential for that space to be part of negotiation if it's, if that use is included?
Absolutely.
I think it's more of a, for a right of first refusal of the space. Correct?
Right?
Correct, because also on the other side of that, just to add to the, to the conversation, maybe do, we would have to, after the building of City Hall was demolished, then we would have to relocate somewhere while this product was being built. Then do we move again to this product? Why then we're also moving to, to a new City Hall? So.
Bring the pizza.
Minimal moves.
And, and the city attorney would like to also comment.
So, so, so one other thing, you know, while you're thinking about this, is maybe the way to approach it would be to require them to build their development in phases and leave City Hall in its footprint for as long as possible by they build their development around us and then take our building down last. And so we can limit our exposure to leasing at Nielsen or somewhere else.
I agree.
I think that's a great suggestion.
Councilmember Graber, you had a comment?
I just wanna make sure, we're not asking specifically for a right of first refusal built into a development agreement, correct? That was not, I know that was just said, that's a hyper-technical term. And so I just wanna make sure this is gonna be, we might optionally need to lease space in one of the phases of the development in order to facilitate city function. It wouldn't be a right of first refusal. I'd good to see that causing a significant amount of issues.
Correct.
Okay, just making sure. Thank you.
Any other comments from council? I think you got your.
Yes.
You're ready to go.
Yes, we have direction on that.
One last question. Felicia, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but worst-case scenario, right? They gotta raise the whole land. This happens five years down the road. Commercial real estate goes through the roof. There's nothing available in the area. Do you feel we have enough space to facilitate operations if that happens, worst-case scenario? While they're building? I know it's a hard question.
It's very hard for me to, to offer a, a response to that. I mean, it, you know, our staff and our, our city operations, we're resilient. So, you know, whether or not that would mean moving portable buildings at our existing facilities. I was just thinking about when I was a child, I went to a school that had portable buildings. I'm sure we all had, you know, can we do that at MSC? It's not optimal. We could probably, you know, we, we could figure it out. I'm, I'm not overly concerned about where we might go while the City Hall is being constructed. And I think to the, the question for the clarity was really, do, do we want the developer to have to accommodate us as a tenant? Is that the?
Right.
The question?
If they can.
If they can, and, and also if they can phase it to the extent that City Hall remains intact as long as possible so that you can continue to occupy the building until it's absolutely necessary.
Exactly.
I think we're gonna be discussing.
Before we leave this topic, I just wanna ask Felicia really quick, what percentage of our employees work from home during COVID?
Oh, I, that, it, I, I can't answer that. Most of our administration did.
Did, okay.
But you think when I, when I look at employees, we have 162 FTEs, fire, water, sewer. It's hard for me to calculate that, but, but all of our, our administrative services, so.
So like, we made it work during COVID without a physical.
And most of them are actually in City Hall.
Right.
So, so the only, the only, you know, when it, when it actually comes down to an absolute like, just, we have to, we have no place to go.
Right, that's what I mean, like how many employees were in City Hall that worked from home?
Then we could probably easily fit into another building and send people to work from home. Because utility billing, again, is really our public interface and people coming in for plan reviews. But other than that, we can decentralize.
Wonderful. Owen, you had a comment?
Well, I, I have a comment or a question, is I totally agree with, with legal counsel that the thoughtful proposal would be able to phase all of this. And I'd like to think that's exactly what I would've said. I think that comes with a footnote. I don't know that I absolutely agree with all the conversation, and I think this is the place to. to share that, is we've now eliminated the debate about whether the property is in or out. We've changed the debate. It's now a different topic. In a sense, we are still providing options that now make potential comparisons difference. If, if we really want the city hall gone to maximize the utility of the site, which is the intent here, then we do need to acknowledge that we are leaving as of a date certain to do exactly what legal counsel is advising, so that different phasing strategies are not different plans. If we want to make use of that site, the optimum plan might require that they be gone immediately. That's kind of a policy decision here. It, so if we're saying that we want to, not are flexible to, if we want to be a part of the development, then I think that's the policy decision. If we are willing to say we will be gone as of a date certain, because that's what you're specifying in your RFP submission, I think we need to agree with that. If we think we can't, I'm fine with that too. I just want you to understand, we just, we just changed the terms of the offer. The city hall is still there. We're now just arguing about when it disappears or where it goes. So I'm not here to solve that for you. I just want to make sure you understand that's what we do. So we have in effect changed the process a little bit, which is fine, just consequences.
You got it. Oh, yes, go ahead. Councilmember Grayber?
Just to make a comment, kind of pigging, backing off of the vice mayor, is, is the worst-case scenario, right? That we don't have anywhere to go or we really don't have any options except making it work. I mean, it sounds like to, to be able to put a date certain of, we're going to be out by a certain point is, we're out until a new city hall, preferably our own city hall on our land, is, is created. And we make it work until then. That is an option that can take place versus putting in these wrinkles of, oh, well, we'd like to have space, but we don't even know what it is yet. And now that, and all the developers have to think about that of, oh, how do we create a space for, that's going to work for a city hall? And then we got to be able to flip it around and put it to someone else because we know they're a temporary tenant. So I think more so if, if it's, the council agrees to say it's, we're out until the new one's done, it sounds like we can make it work. Now, that's putting a lot of burden on staff, but as Felicia said, they're resilient. So something to, to think about.
All right, everybody, thank you. With that, you've got that. Do we want to take a break? Does anybody need a break? It's been two hours, a little over two hours. Do we want to take a five-minute break and be adjourned?
Like a five, five?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, five-minute break.
Anybody? It's cold.
Oh, it's freezing.
Okay.
My hands are frozen.
I'm cold.
Can you feel the drop?
Yeah, I'm putting that on.
My nose is running because it's so cold.
You okay, buddy?
Yeah.
You fine, okay?
So, we skipped one, two, three, and jumped down the floor?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I was making kind of, this, this was kind of, talking right here, right? Which, oh, you did, okay. Well, this, but even this doesn't really touch on timeline, but he kind of peppered in, oh. He didn't, he didn't touch on, yeah. Kind of got right. Yes, I know. I was, that's why I was making notes, because I'm like, it sounds like it's, it's that item, but.
It is a lot of information. It's a lot of good, but the good news is we put the cards together.
Excuse me?
I saw him.
I hope you really have some things.
Early January.
Right.
We were talking, I know, because I know, and then you go and say something different. That doesn't make sense here.
I won't promise you that won't happen. I'm telling you.
Because there's nothing that's ever been.
I was the director of real estate, so I oversaw the.
Ah, wow, yeah.
He issued some against my advice. I didn't have these questions answered.
Oh, not really?
Wes just walked in the back.
Oh.
Sometimes it does.
There we go.
There we go. Okay, now you have to start over.
Now we're back.
Okay, so, as we were saying, our next topic is we need to discuss, and this is important for ranking, how the proposals ultimately are opened and processed whenever they come in. We need to have a conversation about where you feel the greatest priority needs to be in terms of scoring and ranking, and that's going to come down to a question of the plan itself, meaning, you know, the uses, its compliance and compatibility with the mission and vision that you've established for that site, all of those things, compared to the price that may be offered on the land. So these are sort of two things that are not in any way separate from each other, really, but in the event that you say the priority is the price that you'll get for the land, then we need to factor that into how we process the responses that come back to the RFP. So how we process those proposals versus if the priority is the plan, making sure that it's compliant and compatible with the vision and the mission, as well as consistent with your existing zoning you have in place, and, you know, general character and architectural standards that you feel are most appropriate here. So in terms of y'all's preference and priority, you know, these are important topics to discuss, and they will go into how we build the rubric for scoring and ranking.
All right. City manager, what would our first event be? Get a proposal on the property because it hasn't been done since 2016?
Appraisal.
Appraisal? I meant appraisal, sorry. Would that be the best thing to move forward is get an appraisal, or?
Well, the question is, you know, when they submit their proposal back to you, they're going to be telling you, here's the plan that we have for the site, for the land, and here's how much we're willing to pay for the land. And that amount that they're willing to pay for the land, or the amount that they're asking you to contribute to the project, those are the price components.
Regardless of what it appraises for.
Regardless of what it appraises for, that's the bottom line. And we need to know which one of those you place the greatest priority on. Is it the plan and how it complies with the mission and the vision, and overall your desire for that site in terms of character and community compatibility? Or is it about either how much you get out of the land sale price, or the amount that they ask in terms of contribution?
Wow. Yep, you want to go first, Councilmember Graber?
Absolutely. It hasn't been a money thing, right? It's a community, we're building this up, we've been at this for a long time. We're trying to get everybody's input, we've made a focus on that, especially this year, since we've been moving forward with the open houses and the different community engagement plan. The price is going to be the price, but to say the price is more important than what we want to actually see eventually built there, I don't think is the correct way to go, that's my opinion, but that's where I stand.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
So, I mean, we invested the money in the land, but no matter what we sell it for, the ad valorem is well going to make up for that over the next five to 10 years after it's built. To me, it's about the plan, what it brings to the community, what it sends to places, it's about the plan for me.
Okay. Vice Mayor Knapp? I mean-
Former Vice Mayor.
Congratulations.
That was a little early, you know.
Four thirty.
I had no idea, Andrew.
Councilmember Knapp.
Thank you, Mayor. For as long as I've lived here and as long as I've been paying attention to council meetings, it's never been about the price. It's not, we got to recoup what we spent. It's never been about that, is we want a downtown, right? Downtown doesn't say for X amount of dollars. As the Vice Mayor just alluded to, our return on investment is going to be the future tax dollars that we get from a new development on that land. And yes, we hope to recoup some of what we invested upfront to acquire said land, but the real return on the investment besides the tax dollars is going to be that place, that downtown, that everybody, when you've been knocking doors and talking to people around of what they want. So for me, it's place and the plan.
All right, Councilmember Cannon.
Thank you, Mayor.
Almost.
So, to me, you know, a lot of people don't realize, and I know this came up with the library property, that the CRA statute requires that when we dispense this property, you know, we take into consideration the long-term benefits to be achieved in the community, municipality, CRA, blah, blah, blah. And it's, it doesn't necessarily require that it be dispensed with for an appraised value or for the actual value of the land or for what we acquired it for. I think that's important to remember in this context because people in this community have let us know that they're envisioning a place that is partial, you know, it's public and private. You know, it's a place that we are trying to accomplish both things. And because it's going to be both things, that necessarily comes at a cost, right? A developer's not necessarily going to give us a public component of the public-private development for free. And, you know, I know that's easy to misunderstand because people think, okay, my tax dollars went toward acquiring this property, but Vice Mayor is correct, there's ad valorem dollars to be had there. And then there's also the fact that if we, you know, utilize their assistance in creating that public space, then we're not spending the money. Or if they, you know, ask us to contribute that money, that could be offset by the pricing component. But I think that the price is, for me, certainly a factor. I want to recoup the value, not necessarily the dollar amount. But more important to me is the proposal, this vision statement that our residents came up with, and how the proposal that we received meets that vision statement, meets that sense of place that we're looking for in the public component, while also respecting that history and the private component, and creating that economic opportunity that serves both the public and private. So to me, it also is about the proposal.
Okay. Owen, when you did your class, your CRA 101, when I attended that class with you, one of the things that you said in that class that really stuck with me is you said that when a municipality has property for sale, or they want to dispose of it to a developer, you said in that, in that class, that it's not about the money, it's about the investment in the community. And I'll never forget that. And that's where I think we're headed with a consensus here with the council, is that it's more important that we build something for the people of this community than worry about the money. So there you go.
Got it. Okay. So with that, then, comes a question of, do we want the price or offer/ask to be separate from the proposal, where we do our scoring and ranking exclusive of that piece? And we run our rubric exclusively on the plan itself, the experience of the proposer, you know? Do we then exclude the price from the rubric entirely? Basically say, put that in a separate envelope? And that's to be opened after we score the proposal? And then those will be considered separately from the actual ranking?
That's a good question. Any comments? Councilmember Cannon, you want to go first?
Sure. It would be very difficult for me to not consider it altogether in one envelope, just because I, while I do put proposal first, I think price is part of the consideration. And I honestly, I think our residents are going to want to know. I think, I think that, and I think that's fair. I mean, I think our city staff is going to want to know. I would want to consider it as part of the universe of things that they submit to us.
Councilmember Knapp?
I tend to agree, because oftentimes, just in my line of work, when we're out there looking for projects and stuff, you know, we're waiting to get these quotes and our proposals back. And what do we do? We see the first couple lines, couple pictures in, scroll, 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 what's the number going to be? So, now granted, that's, I think, maybe too far to jump ahead in something this significant in nature. I don't hate the idea of it being not the first thing we look at, you know? That it is separate, but it still does go into the overall evaluation of, you know, if we got two things we really like, right? Well, and they're dead set equal, well then, where are we going to probably fall? What's going to be that, that last factor that makes us go one way or another? If we have something that's crazy, amazing, and then something that's, that's pretty good, but that this thing's going to cost us, you know, launching a rocket to the moon, well, we're probably not going to go down that route, right? So I'd like to see it be taken into consideration. And again, I don't hate the idea of it maybe the first pass, that first look at it, and the details of it, before then seeing the price, kind of takes that potential bias out of saying, well, do I like this as it is without the financial component? And then putting that into play.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm thinking about the process, and I'm looking at the transparency, and look, every, our citizens, our residents, our staff, everybody should know this information. When these RFPs come back and we go through this rubric of scoring, even if they're in the RFP, or if they're in a separate, secret envelope, at the end of that meeting, we're going to know all the information. Correct?
Yes.
So to keep it unbiased, I like the approach of keeping the price out of it. You're looking at the project, we're looking at the sense of place, we're trying to get an understanding, but by the end of that meeting, all the information is going to be available to everybody. So I kind of like the secret envelope approach.
Councilmember Graber?
It'd almost be like rounds of ranking. This is the first amount of information that you have. And then after we have that, we have to, we'll add a new element to the consideration. Does that change the ranking at all? So I don't, in terms of just aesthetic and feel and what we want to see, perhaps that's the first ranking we do, if that makes sense.
The plan.
And then, right, and then, okay, we've ranked them, well, here's the estimated cost of all of them. Does that impact our ranking? So I think it would, if we, you know, launching a rocket to the moon, as former Vice Mayor Knapp had said. So I think it's rounds of ranks, it would probably be the best approach, and put different elements, it might only be two rounds, right? But I think that encompasses what you were saying, current Vice Mayor, and what the rest of us were talking about.
All right. I agree with the council. And-
I don't think we had consensus.
Yeah, I think we're-
Yeah, we didn't have- It would be, be a hybrid approach. I mean, it would, there would be a separate envelope, as Vice Mayor Buckman said.
I like the idea of the-
But a total of final ranking would come out, we would need to consider all of those factors, which is what-
So I would be in the opposite camp, I would be the no separate envelope camp.
You want everything all at once upfront?
Yeah. Yeah. Because I, it's proposal first, but the price does matter to me because, let's say, for example, let's say they don't want to give us anything. What if the price is, we're giving you nothing? The price is zero, it's a trade. You know? To me, that's a significant factor. It's not the only factor. I'm not saying it's the only factor. But, you know, it would have to be a very, very convincing proposal for me to then explain to a resident, you know? And this, this did happen with the library property, with a particular constituent who had valid concerns, you know? We paid X for this property, or in the situation I was previously in, it was that land is worth this. And I understand the statute says what it says, and we all know that. But from a resident's perspective, you've got, you know, eight acres of land right there that's extraordinarily valuable, and we have to justify that. And I can justify it with, you know, a whole host of information, but it's hard to do it after the fact. It's a little harder for me mentally to do it after the fact. I just, I think that all of it goes into a sort of rubric for us to rank on. That's just, that's just me. I understand that you guys have different considerations.
I personally would like to see the proposal with the amount that they're offering for the land. I personally would like to see it, the sealed proposal.
Altogether.
Altogether.
Okay.
Any other thoughts?
I can get there, I was, yeah, I was just offering up a different alternative.
So it sounds like maybe the potential is that the scoring rubric factors in price, but that that is not at as great of a weight as the plan components and compatibility itself. You don't want these to be equal.
I agree with that.
Yes, I agree with that.
Is there, is there a way, though, still to satisfy the desire of taking that all into consideration when raking it? But kind of that being the last piece of each individual proposal that would be presented to us? Or is that too, too far removed? Like you see all five first, and then they go to the numbers, or? Or do we feel that that won't, won't influence, like, how much the plan is appreciated versus what, what the offer is for said plan?
Felicia, you have any comments?
Yeah, that's a good perspective.
Just a, just a comment, is that, you know, if you, there's advantages to both, and Laura can, can expand on that. But, you know, an advantage to having them all together would, would be in the negotiations. Because it may be possible that you may want a little more on this side, and you're willing to give and pay for that on this side. So, you know, that would just be one advantage of, of keeping them together. But, but again, Laura can expand on the advantages of keeping them together, and then the-
So one important piece of this to remember is you're offering five firms to respond to this RFP, right? So, and you've, you've told us that the plan, its design, its compatibility with the community, its consistency with the mission and the vision are priority one. So we understand that piece, right? There's other components that points and, and scoring will be awarded based on, including, you know, the experience of the firm and, and related type elements specific to the respondents. So if we think about those, and we say, okay, well, you've got five, you're going to rank these things, one through five, keeping the financial ask, the, the price point, in a separate envelope to be evaluated after you rank, does not mean that it doesn't affect anything. All that it means is, if you decide, okay, well, let's look at the top three, and we take the top three and say, okay, the top three are all within this many points of each other, that's where price is going to become a factor, right? Because they're all very, very similarly compatible and consistent. If price is something that you want to consider in the scoring and initial ranking, then you need to weighted appropriately for that. Keep in mind, it's not like nobody's ever going to know the price. This is Florida, we have sunshine laws, the price is going to become public. It's not a question of will or won't you based on price? It's a question of how price may affect the ranking. So ultimately, if the plan is the priority, then the plan is the priority. But if the financial piece, or who knows, maybe, like you said, somebody could come in and say, not only do we not want to give you anything for the land, we need you to kick in another million of tax relief coming back over a period. We don't know what those kind of asks are going to look like at the moment. But until we get them, we won't know. So what we don't want to do is then see the price, and it's sully our, you know, review and interpretation of the plan. Simply because maybe it is what you would perceive, depending on what it may be, as over the top, or too much, or not enough in terms of offer. So this is an important conversation, it's an important piece. I think you are all in consensus that the plan itself is your top priority. So now it's just a question of how we treat the financial, the price point element of it. But it sounds like, on the whole, you're okay with the idea of the price being a separate evaluation condition? As long as it's not eliminated from the scoring or evaluation altogether?
Okay.
Is that, is that kind of what I'm hearing? I don't think we have a clear, everybody's on the same page, I'm just trying to-
I'm going to add just one simple thing. What you have said, without putting words, certainly without chewing them, is you said the plan is worth 51% of the selection process. Now, so we, I think we can talk about that, because if that's not what you're saying, then I haven't understood. So it's what percent between zero, which I don't think anybody's on, and 49. I mean, as a conceptual logarithm, that's what we're saying here, is the plan is at least 51%. So if I'm not understanding that correct, we, we need to amplify that discussion.
I think that's correct, anybody else have any comments? That's correct. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
One question, in your private-public partnerships like this, what do you typically see as standard customary? Private envelope or in the deal?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
He's asking, what would we consider to be customary or standard? Private envelope for price, or included in the overall proposal?
The one where I said we had the 100 and, the $250,000 number, that was in a separate envelope. And then they were ultimately within $300,000 or $400,000 of each other. I mean, the beauty of having an appraisal is, there is a striking point that's already out there. You might willingly accept less than that appraisal, even though the market value is probably far higher. I don't know what you're going to do. But there's a sense that a number's already been created that people are thinking about. And if they're not, I'm throwing it out there so that they think about it now. Again, I've seen it go both ways. The only one thing I am 100% sure of is if you really think the plan's the most important, that's a way of not letting it get in the way of the discussion, which I think was your point. It's not about eliminating its merit as a contribution. Is if you go, well, it's more important than I'd say to you is, it's like, why do we even care about the rest of it? And if we care about the rest of it, let's rank that accordingly. But, but the plan itself is the most subjective discussion items, even though you have some mental criteria of how it's going to unfold. And so it's, even if, if we put a numeric value to it, it's still subjective, because you can grant them all the plans because it's multifamily, or all the points because it's commercial. That's subjective. Price, not so much. So we say you are better off, if you really are committed to the plan, which I'm hearing, in terms of at least 51%. Whatever that ultimate percentage is, let's just don't get the conversation clouded. It needs to be a way, at least to satisfy you, for sure, that it, we don't ignore it. I don't know what that percentage is, because I think we've got to go through all these other things about what we're doing with City Hall, or not doing with City Hall. We didn't come in here with a set weighting. We came in here to get your temperature about what that weighting should be. And then we'll try to normalize that by putting points to it. But I, I normally believe you can only discuss subjective things when objective things are set aside.
Okay. So we in consensus that we want the plan first?
I think we have a holdout.
I mean, I don't, I don't know what the, I actually wanted a clarification as to what Laura said, but the last sentence, you probably don't remember what it was. You said, receiving the plans and nobody will know, it's not like nobody will know what the price is.
Yeah, eventually, that's all going to be public. What we're saying is, when it initially comes in, keep in mind, when these proposals come in, we're not going to put them in front of you and ask you to go down and score them. They're going to come in, they're going to be stamped as received, they're going to be opened, they're going to be reviewed and processed. So when we talk about the price being a separate envelope, it just means that envelope doesn't get opened until everything else has been done.
Okay.
And that's, I think, to Owen's point of keeping the subjective and objective components of ranking separate. Because that way, there's no way that you're then reviewing and scoring a project, thinking to yourself, how in the world did they ask this mu, are they offering so little on this project? It's not confusing the narrative at all, it's keeping them very separate. So I think that was to his point of keeping those things separate. But it doesn't mean that it doesn't matter. And ultimately, any recommendation that comes out of there, out of these, the scoring, the ranking, all of that, is going to have the, the price point listed in it. So what you see, whenever all of these come in, and they get scored and ranked and all of that, what gets presented to you is going to have the price shown on it. It's not, there's not going to be a secret there.
All right.
Yeah, to me, it's not so much that it's a secret, it's that, to me, it's, it's very, maybe it's impossible for me to separate the subject- Yeah, to me, it's not so much that it's a secret, it's that to me, it's, it's very, maybe it's impossible for me to separate the subjective and the objective. Maybe it all just happens at once. We did that personality thing that one time, remember? How we each of us make decisions?
Very different.
So for me, it's one of those things where I kind of want to, I, I want to evaluate it all together in a different, with giving each item different weight, but I, I'm open to, to other ideas. So if the rest of the council has a different consensus, I understand that. But for me, if the, if the plan is, you know, 51%, or actually for me, it's probably more than that. The price is a consideration for me. Because in this type of situation, like I said, where we're looking for a public component, you know, it could very well be a, a zero-sum game, right? So we love it, the price is zero. I don't want anybody to say, oh, now what do we do? Oh, we already eliminated the bottom two based on subjective criteria, but ooh, now that I see what they wanted to give us, it looks a little bit better now. Maybe that was worth the trade-off and the negotiation. Or, you know, hey, uh, submission A had this that we love, hey, submission B over here, just so you know, we really like what they have right there in, you know, like, to me, I want to know, I want to know all of it, but I've spoken enough, you guys.
So let me ask this real quick, so, I mean, to Owen's point, we're, we're in agreement that no less than 51% of, of this is the plan.
Right.
So now we're just in a question of what some other minority portion is allocated to the price, correct? Well, we've got other stuff that's got to get built into that as well. And I think maybe what we can do then is work with your staff and we will come up with that rubric of scoring and a procedure for how we go about doing that. So that it satisfies what we've heard today, because I think there's, there's generally the, we're kind of there, but it's just a procedural question of at what point.
Right.
So.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
And I know we've been kind of jumping around as far as the agenda items go, but the way you sort of just described the receipt and processing of the submissions and ultimately before it hits our eyes, it's going to be all laid out. When it comes to that scoring and ranking, is there going to be any scoring and ranking that takes place as part of your consulting with staff, or is it solely going to be ranking by us? Can you kind of?
Well, I, my understanding is the recommendation is coming from us and your staff combined.
Okay.
That's how that, I mean, we're going to do alongside staff, so.
As far as you then doing scoring and ranking, we're going to be presented with the recommendation.
We're going to give you scores and then y'all are going to say, based on these scores, we would say, this is our number one, this is our number two, this is our number three, this is number four.
But by the same token, they're ranking them using the criteria which we say is most important.
Right, right.
So to me, I want them to be.
So to that point, the, I think it's important, we think about score versus rank. So like, we're going to give you a rubric basically saying, this one was awarded this many points and this one in these different categories.
Okay.
And then you're going to evaluate those and say, okay, well, this is the one that we picked to rank number one and select, assuming that that proceeds into negotiations, this is who you're going to rank second and third and fourth and fifth.
Okay.
So it's not us seeing that, we're seeing, going to see the number in all the scoring. We're not going to be seeing that number and having that potentially influence how any other elements being scored or how the proposals receive. It's, as, as it's planned right now, it's, it's all coming to us in that one.
In one forum.
Five times over.
Felicia, you have, you have, Felicia, you have something to say?
As it's currently planned.
Felicia, is there something you wanted to say, or?
I just wanted to be clear on the process. So, so, you know, we do a round, GAI does a round as part of their contractual obligations to us with staff to, to provide some level of, of scoring based on the, you know, um, the objective items. And then you all would do the final ranking, um, of course, in a public forum.
All right.
So Laura, what Andrew just said, he makes a good point, right? So you guys are opening the envelopes, right?
Well, yeah, sort of, I mean, I think.
They might be.
They're opening envelopes, there's a lot of.
So we want to keep everything very transparent and very, very clear. Submissions are going to come in to city staff, city staff's going to stamp those in, they're going to then have them in the public record. They will then be shared with us to evaluate and, so they're not coming to our office, we're not stamp-receiving them.
Right, but.
They're coming in here.
But less semantics, more.
Yeah.
When Felicia is analyzing that or, or giving her score of those various categories, for, for me, what I'm saying is I want her to be considering the, the price as part of that.
So you want it as part of the scoring system?
That's just me. So I would love to hear what Councilmember Graver and Vice Mayor have to say, we haven't heard from them.
I mean, my, my thought process, thank you, my thought process is once you put the price in your head, it's always going to be a barrier to making a clear decision on the objective. It's my thought process. I think, and I've been this way before, where you've got to put your, your plan in place and the, the price comes in privately, so I'm used to this process. It's just, it, it makes it so that we focus on what our citizens want and not so much the financial and the financial is not influencing the other side of it. With a project this size, and you made a good point, I'm trying to imagine the phone calls I would receive if the plan comes with the pricing on it, it gets to the public eye and the public's, I'm not spending $5 million on this, I'm not spending $10 million on this. We're going to get a lot of pricing objections from the public before we even have a chance to even look at this and say, does the plan meet our vision and mission?
Good point, Councilmember Graver.
Sticking with what I said before, I mean, it's the same exact, as Owen was attempting to describe, and thank you both for trying to articulate what I was saying, I caught what you were doing there. It's, what are we doing, what are we looking at, what do they want to build? And what you're saying is, give me everything. And so to what Councilmember Knapp had said is, you know, it's like when you get an appeal back, what do you do? You flip to the back page, you see, did we win or did we lose? It's the same thing when you're looking at money, it's like, okay, well, how much is this? And if you do that and you look at that first, now, we could trust that you wouldn't, or that Felicia wouldn't, and that we go through the whole entire process, but once you get the number, it's, so I don't think that's, it's, well, okay, we really like this project and it's ranked number one, and then we find out the money and we're like, wow, we can't do that. Well, can we, you know, is there a way to negotiate that down? And I think what everybody's trying to, to state in different ways is what's being built there? Is it a carousel and that's it, and it's $300 million? Well, that's a really bad idea, but I don't need to know $300 million, right? Like, I just looked at what you proposed here and it's a bad idea, so I don't even want to move forward with that. Now, if it's everybody's project, there's four projects that are $300 million and there's only one that we can afford, well, that's a horse of a different color, but I don't think we're there yet. It's really, hey, we're giving you the parameters of what we'd like to see built. How close can you get there? Okay, well, now we need to know how much it's going to cost us, maybe we're going to have to, to say, well, we can't do this one, we could do that one, and that's getting us really close. You know, 80% of what we want, those sorts of things. But to just say, it's going to cost X, well, I'm going to be like, I can't even look at this, even if it's exactly what I wanted, you know? Because the money would be clouding judgment, as I think you were trying to say.
Yeah, it can, it could happen on either end, right?
Yeah.
You get, as you just said, you could have good projects or bad.
I, yeah, I'm going to stick with the plan, I, I kind of agree with Councilmember Graver. I, I, I think that we've been working on this project for a long time and I think you two have come in and done a wonderful job for the city staff and the council. And I think we need to see, see the vision of the plans and go from there and then not worry about the price right now. Just get the, see what we, we get offered by the five proposals.
So is it part of the scoring rubric or not?
Do you want to raise hands?
Or is it a separate call?
First of all, I got to tell you how much I love working together in this session, because
Yeah, it's great.
I've been in sessions like this where it gets.
Yeah, this is great, this is wonderful.
I mean, to, Owen just brought up a good point, he was like, you know, just remember, we're not saying to ignore price, we're saying,
I don't think anybody's saying that.
Wait until you've done all of the other for it to become a consideration.
Right.
And I think, I mean, look, in going to what Councilmember Graver's saying, just, I think saying it in a different way, maybe repeating what you're saying, is even if we go through the five and we find two or three that we love, and we open the pricing in the two or three we don't love, we now have an option to go back, hey, we like this, let's go, you know, we have that option to go back.
That changes things, right?
That, that's, that's going to happen, let's just foreshadow that, that's going to happen. But I think keeping the price from clouding that judgment is important.
Okay, again, this has been an afternoon of full disclosure, things you can do and things that we're discouraging. And I believe your lawyer would kick me perhaps. I have not discussed this specifically, is you can't negotiate the proposals from the DIES. I mean, you can't do that. If you're standing here and you've seen all the proposals and you've seen the ranking, you can't turn to developer A and go, wow, if you added a park, I don't care about your price. You can't do that. There's got to be a much more, um, appropriate way for me to say that, but amounts to the fact, you can't do that. Is you're, 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 you're trying to take what is, do I like or dislike a plan? That is a subjective process based on a whole bunch of regulated and personal considerations. And for the sake of discussion, that might be 90% of your review. What we are agreeing is, is that at least 51% of it, that is your review. But then you can't then say, well, would you trade this building for a park, or this park for a city hall? It's because that changes the dynamics theoretically, again, talking about your appraisal at, you know, 720 an acre, I think. Is, I'm not going to be pleased it's significantly less than that, that's going to be my interpretation. I don't know what that means at the moment, but, uh, and there is a number out there anchoring some people's review. The parks, the open space, all the filigree, that costs money. And theoretically, these developers are acknowledging that and working through their number. So what I'm hearing, to reinforce again from my limited old person's point of view, is we're saying, it's at least it's important, it's not as important as the plan. Some of you, not all of you are saying, is let's discuss the concept first. We're saying the price is ever-present, it's just going to have a lower weighted value in the scheme of things. And that lower weighted value hopefully will be enough to let you take two very similar things and go, wow, is there very similar, or this one is so much better for just a few dollars less? That's going to be my final interpretation based on that weighting. We have not worked through that yet, because we didn't know how you were going to react. It was entirely possible you would have said, plan, price is as important. It already says, you know, using my 41, 49, 51, it says it's at least 50/50. I don't hear anybody saying that. So all we're debating about is zero to 49, and we don't think it's zero. We think it's enough that you don't need to let the subjective portion of the, the other 51% get distorted by, wow, these people are offering us $20 million bucks. It's like, if they are, great, but if the plan's wrong, don't, don't, don't be tilted by that. So I, I think we're all clear on where our position is. And however you choose to do that, we're fine with it. And I think we've made our views clear and it's just our advice, it's opinions, you're the policymakers. So we're good with whatever you decide to go with, so I want to make that clear too.
Okay. Were you okay? You want a hand raised, what do you want?
Okay, so generally speaking.
Raise your hand if.
We're all, I think, I think what we've just heard from that and from all of you is, you are all in agreement that the plan is the priority and that the price falls somewhere below 49% of the consideration of any point awarding.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
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 All right, we got five yeses.
Okay. Now, keep in mind, you're going to see the rubric when we bring it back to you as a draft, so then if for some reason.
Different debate.
If for some reason you feel like we've missed the mark. Because we are going to work with your city manager on that topic to make sure that we feel like we're capturing what, you know, the, the overall temperature is on this issue. So when you get this thing back and you look at the rubric, if we've assigned, you know, 15% to price and you feel like that's over or under, again, we're going to, we can have that conversation when you see the full RFP and how it all comes together, because then you're also going to see all of the other breakdowns of point awarding. So, good?
Perfect, excellent.
Okay.
Incremental step.
The next thing is then related to the plan itself. We need to discuss if there are any things that you want to explicitly prohibit in terms of uses. Now, you have a, you have a zoning code that says what uses are permitted there, you know, from the LOI. It went out as a mixed-use concept, so that could include retail, office, hotel, residential, you know, all of these things. Are there any uses that you just want to see removed from the mix? And if so, what are those?
I'm going to go first, because I haven't gone first, is that okay?
I'm not running the show, did your clerk say that's okay? I'm not in charge, we're just having a conversation.
So the whole concept I really don't want to see, and I've gotten a lot of feedback from the residents on this, is we don't, they don't want another hotel. I think we have enough hotels in our city. I think that the eight acres of land could be developed with a park and mixed use with retail space without a hotel. I don't really think we need another hotel. That is the only thing I don't want to see personally myself, is a hotel. All, all other options are open, the whole, the whole property, City Hall, knock it down, get rid of it.
Totally not expecting you to say that.
Not this building.
I like this building.
No, this, no, this, no, this building is not, never this building, this is our history here.
I'm like, I make a motion that GAI open an Oldsmar office and, and we rent space downstairs.
Not allowed to negotiate at the DIES, don't negotiate.
So that's my only one, I'm going to let Councilmember Knapp go next.
All right, so as far as our current zoning and conditional uses, all that is still going to apply. We're not, I don't think, going to be making any exceptions there. I, I understand where in the past proposals have come for what has been touted as a potential unmet need for an upscale hotel. So I could see how, yeah, that makes sense. Is, is it enough to where it warrants that it's going to have high capacity? I don't know, so I can go either way on that. I, I mean, I do agree, yes, there's a lot of rooms, oftentimes, you know, what their capacity is, we're not running the hotels, so we don't know. And again, that's going to come down to the developers on what they feel is going to be, you know, the best use case for them and what they're accustomed to, so. Carving that out as saying it can't be done, it may already take care of itself based on the market conditions and what the developers are interested in. But beyond that, I, I mean, I think our current restrictions are applicable and, and me personally, I haven't heard of anything that's like, oh, let's make sure we don't do this, it's a lot of, well, we want this, you know? And it's specific, but in general could be described as commercial or mixed use, so. Nothing specific for me.
Counselor, Ken, you want to go next?
Yeah, so I, I think, um, I'm of a similar opinion to Councilmember Knapp. I, I wouldn't, um, cross a hotel, you know, off the list, that's just me. I think, um, under our permitted uses, we have listed, um, number six under 3.7.2 is professional services, including medical, dental and optical offices, real estate, travel agencies, brokerage, houses, office supplies. There has definitely been feedback about, um, medical, dental, kind of, that, that kind of, um, space. Hopefully, the market would dictate that. I, I don't, I don't necessarily think it's, um.
That's probably more of a. That's probably more of a tendency topic, which I don't think you wanna get into, I'm, I'm talking more high level of...
I think looking at the, the uses and exclusions, I mean, the only things, you know, prohibited lands and structures, we have that in our code. What I'm getting at is what we have in our code, I think, is sufficient, I don't know that we should be excluding more than is already excluded under prohibited uses under the code.
Got it. So you don't wanna take anything off the table that's outright already permitted?
I think we might be selling ourselves short if we do, but...
I had, I had one more comment that I wanted to add. Since the current hurricane Ian that destroyed Fort Myers, I also don't want a parking garage. I think that the developers should focus on the parking underneath, whatever they decide to build up. I think they should have the parking below, so in case that we do have a catastrophic storm, that if you see some of the buildings in Fort Myers that got destroyed, that had parking on the bottom, the townhomes above, or the apartments or above were saved. So that was another thing I wanted to bring up.
So you don't, you're, you don't wanna see freestanding parking? You'd rather it in a podium style?
I would rather have the parking on the first, second, or third level, and then build up. So the hurricane, if we did have a catastr- catastrophic storm, when it came through our city, the parking areas would be destroyed, not the buildings above.
So I think part of the, part of the mission and vision component, though, is to keep it walkable, which means while the parking component may be integrated into the structures, you're gonna have ground, I mean, ideally, you would have some sort of ground floor street presence.
Mm-hmm.
Commercial presence.
Sort of like what Don Egan did, they have on that street, they have all the retail space below, but behind they have the parking, two, two, three levels, and then they have the apartments, the townhomes above.
So you just don't wanna see, like I was saying, freestanding parking garages, you wanna integrate it into the concept?
Which you'd have to because of the Tampa Road Corridor, it's part of our code.
So that's already...
Can't do a freestanding.
Okay, well, then that's already, there you go, check.
Vice Mayor?
I, there's nothing that I would specifically remove, I, I agree with the hotel, all right, taking that off, but my, my concern, we're talking sense of place, we're talking community, and in my head, I think of a renter versus an owner. And I'm thinking, it's not apartments that I would like to see there, I'd like to see condos or ownership units, not apartments. I think apartments become too transient, and I think that the building will deteriorate in time over time if there's not an H O or something keeping that apartment up and running. Does that make sense? So I don't know if that's in this part of it or another part of it, or I would...
No, that's, that's the whole purpose of, I mean, because you wanna make sure that when folks are submitting proposals, if there's a universal agreement that there's a specific thing that you don't want to see there, that, that gets spelled out in the RFP appropriately.
Can I add? I think that also goes back to the point structure. I mean, I, I, again, we, we don't know what that point structure is, which is why we're having this discussion. It may very well be, the middle ground, is you can do exactly what you wanna do, is zero points if it's rental, okay, for the sake of discussion. It could also be 10 points if it's rental, 30 points if it's condominium.
Okay.
I mean, you, you are free to do what you wish, because it's your property. Ultimately, it's a regulatory issue, but for purposes of specifying who the favorite child here is, is that, that's, that's your prerogative at the moment, and we're just here to say, well, there's a better way to do it perhaps. I don't think I would be exclusionary, I think I would wait in a different way.
Okay. Instead of just eliminating altogether, maybe waiting in different ways, I agree with that.
Okay.
Right, there's no reason to exclude anything at this point, if what we're looking for is proposals, that's been the topic of discussion today, so.
There you go.
Okay, so we do not have consensus to exclude anything or to award priority weight to anything, correct? Because I've got one that said no to hotels, but nobody else agreed on no to hotels, and I've got one that says they'd like to wait ownership versus rental occupancy units in the scoring rubric. Is there any other?
And Mayor, I think the discussion, you can, if you don't like, if it's within a proposal, you could not like it later.
Right.
So we don't, wouldn't want to limit what's in the proposal.
And I agree, and I wanna make one point clear too, that I don't have a problem with the mixed use as far as maybe townhomes and apartments, I really don't have that, I don't have a problem with that, I just wanna make sure you guys are clear with that to the council. I don't have a problem with apartment complex, a townhome complex, retail space, I don't have a problem with that either, so. I think where Councilmember Graber said, we're gonna open up the door and let it go, let's see what we get.
So you're saying you're okay with proposals that come in with hotels, we'll just assign it a different way?
Right, and like, like Councilmember said, I can, I can say no to it with that.
Yeah, I think our ordinances speak for themselves, right? You can't do this, you might be able to do this, you can do this, show us what you got, and then we're gonna decide later.
And the reason, I, I wanna explain the hotel, Councilmember Gannon, because I think with COVID, and after being with, as mayor, going with the Chamber of Commerce, to We Mean Business, we went to the Hyatt, we went to the different hotels, and after meeting with the owners of those hotels, they basically said that their attendance is down, because a lot of the employees in our city are working from home. They're not coming in from out of town anymore and coming here. So the hotel occupancy rate is lower, so that's why I, I'm saying I'm kind of against the hotel, but I think that we should leave it on the table if the developer wants to bring it in, let them do it.
Question.
Go ahead, Councilmember Nap.
So you're not seeking any specific weighting of any of for or against, or what we like more, or are you right now?
Well, I mean, if there's a, if you all say, you know, we wanna think about this as a low priority use, therefore, we'd like to see it, you know, in that condition, we like to see points, you know, awarded a little less favorably to the following, we can do that. I think our intent here was just to make sure that there was no outright opposition to a specific use on this site, meaning, you know, do you want them to not have any office use? Do you want, you know, no hotel? Do you want, you know, is there a reason or a really hard line you wanna draw on a specific use? Because that way, the proposals you get understand that use is not desired on this site, therefore, please don't include it. And in the event that it were included, there would be deductions for that purpose. But it sounds like there's not an explicit desire to just blanketly exclude.
Right.
There may be some preference for one thing over the other, but you'd rather consider that at the time that you're ranking them.
Right, like I might rank retail space a little bit higher, because it's something that our residents can, can use as opposed to more private space, you know, that, that kinda thing. I mean, I don't know if you're asking for all of those categories of things right now?
No, no, I mean, that's what you're going to, I think that's the point, is that's how you can do that. Now, if you want us to wait those, that's a different part of the conversation, if you're looking for us to wait those uses.
That's basically a subcomponent of the 51%, right?
Right, but at the moment, it doesn't, but, but at the moment, it doesn't sound like we would reach a consensus on how to wait those uses, because it sounds like everybody would have their own personal preference.
Probably.
So I don't think that's, what we do know now is, you don't want to just outright say, don't build this, or don't include this in your mixture of uses. You'd rather see them just propose what they think the market is most responsive to, and then you will, you will consider that mixture of uses at such time as they are presented to you after we score everything consistently, correct?
Yes.
And which complies with the code, of course.
Right.
Because if you propose an Amazon warehouse, then I'm gonna say no.
Right? Because... That's fair.
Excluded uses, right?
Excluded uses, yes. Um, let's see.
Or convenience store.
Other than the desire for there to be public space, which is pretty explicitly stated in the vision and the mission that was come up with for this site, there's no other inclusionary components, like things you wanna see in the site, other than that public component and a public element there for, you know, the general public to enjoy and utilize, correct?
I personally don't wanna change anything, anybody else have any comments on that?
Are you looking for specific elements, like I wanna see an amphitheater?
No, just other than that one thing that you wanna see included, are there any other inclusions? You have a, a desire for public space, that can take many forms, we're not asking you to define the form, but you still want some sort of public component included, whether that be pavilions, parks, amphitheaters, whatever the case may be, you still want that included as a component?
Yes.
Okay.
No water?
We'll get there.
She left.
All right, so the, the last kind of, I think, well, one of the last topics related to this element is gonna be, is there a desire to award any type of preference for experience in terms of local experience in Pinellas County or in the Tampa Bay metro? You know, is there any desire to sort of award points in that realm, or are you just open to the best plan?
You mean points, like what, what kinda points?
So when we go to evaluate, when we go to evaluate these proposals, do you want to award any type of priority or point structure specific to their local presence? If they're, if they're a local vendor, if they've done projects here before, if they have a local, you know, if they are based out of, you know, the tri-county region kinda thing?
I understand now.
Or do you just wanna say, the best plan is the best plan, and the firm with the most experience regardless of location?
Any comments?
I'm a best plan person.
Yeah, I do too, best plan.
It, best case, it's the cherry on top, but I like the whole banana split, so.
I mean, for, for me, it's the best plan is the best plan, but I personally can say that the, the letters of intent that came back that were from local people, in my opinion, better captured what we're looking for, because they've done it, they've been here.
Yep.
So...
So you think that will correct itself?
I think that will naturally take care of itself.
Yes.
Got it. Okay, so I think the last thing will be, is there any, so the last thing on my list anyways, this one that we passed out to y'all that we haven't talked about today, is incentives. It's been my understanding, based on our prior conversations and also in discussions with staff, that you're not looking to offer any specific type of incentive, or present those related to this, you're looking specifically to the land to be that facilitator, is that still accurate?
I don't know why it would've changed.
Just making sure.
The city hall land being included is the new incentive.
Yeah, that's the new incentive.
Got it. Okay. Owen, am I missing anything off of our list of consensus discussion topics that we need to cover? Is there anything you think we should, that you think we missed, or that you want to make sure that we've considered in preparing this? Because when we leave here, we're gonna just pen to paper and start sketching this thing out, we're gonna be working with your staff on that as well, to hopefully get something, you know, substantively complete and ready for staff to really fully review altogether towards the end of this month, so that you all can consider that, you know, polished draft at your meeting in February.
And the last meeting in February, or the first, right? The last, second meeting?
I think we're targeting the first, but it might be the second, depending on how long it takes us to get through drafts.
Did you need a consensus from us on how long we wanted to give the developers to respond to the request for proposal?
So I think our original...
That was on the list, I might have misinterpreted.
Yeah, no, we talked about it a bit at the beginning, but given that the, the desire to set up a, a unique entity is off the table, I think that kind of eliminates some of the need to extend that out. Now, as Owen mentioned, more time is always better, but it can't be forever.
Right.
So the way we had originally scoped this out as a suggested schedule was a four-week turnaround time. If you wanna bump that up to five weeks just for good measure, that's, that's up to y'all.
I actually personally like the second council meeting in February, if you could have something by that.
Not us, we're talking about the response time. So once that they get them in hand, how long do they have to submit their proposal? So our schedule showed four weeks.
What's your recommendation as to...
So I, I'd like to bring the proposal back with the RFP with a, with a tentative schedule, when Owen was talking about having a public forum before they submit their proposal. So when we hadn't...
Are we still talking about that before? I thought we were saying after.
No, I meant before we ranked.
Oh, okay, because when he said before, I was thinking that, that's a three-week notice process in that, and we hadn't talked about that, so...
He meant before we ranked, not before they...
So I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't part of that, so...
No, I was just asking specifically for how long, after we send out the request for proposals, how long do we wanna give the developers to respond?
We, we standard give 30 days for a response, for something like that.
So four weeks, you're sticking with the four weeks?
Yep.
Okay.
Can I...
I was kinda going with the one suggestion, we do like a little more, but...
One question, because going back to the prior plan we had, that was on the table prior to this council, there was a lot of concern about the amount of space on the first floor, walkable space, walkable downtown, that was actually contributed to the apartment, so it was private property in, in essence, and how much was usable by the residents. Is that something we bring up now, or is that something we bring up in the scoring?
Yes.
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 You can say yes.
Yeah, I'm like, yes to both. It is something, if that is an issue, and you wanna make sure that all walkable spaces are publicly accessible walkable spaces, I think that's something we wanna make sure goes into the scoring condition. So then, if they include spaces that are isolated specifically for private use, that we would score those appropriately. I mean, should they propose, you know, a, a private swimming pool for a condominium complex, I think we would have to factor that in, because that would need to be fenced and gated and not open to the public, obviously, but in terms of pedestrian connectivity and flow, I think we can certainly add that into a scoring system.
Yeah, the, the letter that you guys sent us, the memo, August 10, 2022, where you talked about the summary of the July 20 public meeting about the vision, creation of the vision statement, there were a lot of good comments similar to what Vice Mayor is bringing up under livability and performance, like a place that's relevant, marketable, walkable, safety, green space, environmental features, management structure for programming and coordinating events, human-scale architecture, charming experience, you know, all that was kind of like in your summary. I know that's a lot, but, but I think that is a valid point to bring up now.
It's in the LOI as well, so when they read the LOI, the mission and vision stuff was in there, and the full, all of that was available on your website in terms of the video footage from that public workshop, where we walked through all of that, that's all there for anyone to review and consider, so.
Yeah, I think hopefully we've gotten the point across that walkability and green space is, is important.
But I mean, compliance with the mission and vision definitely...
For sure.
Yes.
Falls into that.
I just, yeah, I think with all the work that we've done leading up to this point, it's been, let us know, and then we gotta let the, the potential developers know, hey, we, this needs to be walkable, and there's gotta be open, there's gotta be green space, there's gotta be some sort of interactive public space where it's just not the people who may live there, which is what I think you're trying to say.
Yeah, if it's not, if it's not publicly accessible frontage all along State Street, that's not gonna bode as comparable well compared to someone else, it's, it's all shops and retail.
Yeah, I think we've been trying to get that point across now for months.
Years.
Well, that's specific point, in, in that way.
All right, go ahead, Owen.
I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that up. One thing we might want to consider in, in, in the request for proposal is, you know, as we request these public spaces or these publicly accessible spaces, is are, are we saying that these are spaces that we're going to assume public responsibility for? You know, for the sake of discussion, perhaps as part of our parks and open space budget? Or are we saying, we want it, but we're expecting you to maintain and keep it up? I mean, I think these are the types of things we need to put in here, so it's like, I think this is important, but I think it is a policy decision about whose financial responsibility it's for. It gets back to, you know, what, what are you doing versus what are you asking them to do? Let's spell it out here. So if there are anything else on that list, which, which we do feel strongly about, and we're going to address, but we hadn't really talked about how economically or financially someone would assume responsibility for them, but it does beg those kinds of questions. Again, we don't wanna have to negotiate it later, we say the price is, the price is.
Right.
So that's just something to think about if you have...
So that's just something to think about if you have any thoughts on that topic now.
I would like to say something, Felicia, do you want to comment on that? We talked about that before, do we, does the city want to be able to maintain that public space or do we want the developer to do it? Can you comment on that, please?
Financially, we would want the developer to do that.
Every time. However.
However, you know, it depends on, on the proposal. And so may I make a suggestion to the council that we, that you all may want to consider, there was a, a lot of conversation today. And so, you know, I, I, when the, the RFP in, in polished draft form is brought back, we can devote a significant amount of time at that point or, or host another work session to discuss. Because then you'll see where the weights are and the scoring and it might be an opportunity to have a, you know, hey, we've, we forgot about this, we really want to add this. It kind of after, after we have a draft, I would, I would suggest that maybe we take a, a bigger block of time, whether it's a work session or council meeting. I think a work session, we've been here almost four hours at this point, another work session I would put, I would suggest to just talk about, to make sure that your rubric and how you're going to score it, and we can walk you through the, exactly the steps and the process through a proposal, works for you all. And that, that this is really what we want and, you know, as a city and, and what you want as a council.
Thank you.
Great idea.
That's a great idea.
I mean, it's, yeah.
I do too.
We laid the groundwork, let's see the details, we'll give the details.
All right, you got it? Are we all set, anything else?
I think we processed about ninety-nine percent.
Nice.
Oh, what's the one percent?
We're so close.
One percent can be very.
All right, any other comments from council before we adjourn the meeting?
That's it.
Hope to see people at the open house tonight for the library project in thirty minutes.
All right, thank you everybody for coming, greatly appreciated, the city council and my.